Okay, so it is 6:02 and I'll call the North Kingstown School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recess into executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of any discussions of job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance in writing and advised that they may require that discussion to be held at an open meeting pursuant to RIGL 4246581. Sessions pertaining to potential litigation/ legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2, NKSBA contract negotiation update, ESP contract negotiation update, Jamestown contract negotiation update, and Item 3, discussion of any investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct either civil or criminal pursuant to RIGL 4246584. Can I get a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Give me a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Good? Okay, we're gonna get started. Okay, so we are going to recommit into opening session and the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call please. Everyone in a roll, here.
Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Lima. Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Joshua Fertado.
Here.
Joshua Bush.
Here.
Thank you, and the calendar.
April 8th, 7:00 PM, School Committee Business Meeting, Central Office. April Budget Meeting, Joint Budget Hearing with the Town Council, date TBD. May 6th, 7:00 PM, School Committee Business Meeting, Central Office. March 19th, DEI Advisory Committee Meeting, Central Office. March 24th, 4:30 PM, Budget and Finance Advisory Committee Meeting, Central Office. March 26th, 4:30, Health and Wellness Advisory Committee Meeting, Central Office. School Committee Office Hours, March 19th, 7 to 8:00 PM, Central Admin Conference Room.
Thank you. So first up, we have presentations and recognitions, and so we have, I believe, a representative from Youth Pride here today to present to the school committee.
Good afternoon and thank you for your time. Is this thing on? Is this on? Can you hear me?
So, it's very bizarre. It isn't for the... It's for the thing, so it's fine. So we ask you to speak into it, but it goes to the camera.
Oh, oh, okay.
You just don't hear yourself.
Okay, great.
We blink chest.
Awesome. Thank you for your time today. My name is Rush Fraser. I am the Executive Director of Youth Pride, Rhode Island's only drop-in center that caters to the needs of LGBTQIA+ youth. Since 1992, we have been an indispensable resource for youth and families across the Ocean State. We serve youth ages 5 through 24, providing resources such as one-to-one mental health care, case management services, homelessness diversion and rapid rehousing, basic needs pantry, a closed closet and more. We also support Gender and Sexuality Alliances, or GSAs, at middle schools, high schools and colleges. I usually create detailed slide decks for situations like this. However, if you need my graphic design skills to understand the implications of denying youth a safe space at the same address where they believe their future is being shaped, you require a conscience, integrity and courage, not an infographic. Committee members, you're not new to this. You also know that I'm not from your neighborhood, but youths who call North Kingstown home travel to us in order to seek a safer space. Nevertheless, I am aware that on February 12th, people who live in your zip code, your constituents, your neighbors, stood where I am now and shared that LGBTQ+ students are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide compared to their straight and cisgender peers, with bullying often being a significant factor. Attending school with even one anti-LGBTQ+ policy is linked to higher rates of anxiety, depression, truancy, and in the past year, suicide attempts among LGBTQ+ students. Up to 40% of unhoused youth in the US identify as LGBTQ+. LGBTQ+ young people living in states with a higher proportion of schools that provide LGBTQ+ inclusive sexual education curricula report lower suicide risk and experience less bullying than their peers in states with less inclusive education. I'm not here to delude myself into thinking that one more time around the block will make much of a difference to people who are not already convinced every living person deserves equal treatment. My purpose tonight is to support your neighbors who spoke passionately about queer and trans youth last month, and add to the public record that another adult and parent is here to remind you how important it is for the Ocean State to step in, step up and lead in this moment. I'm here to remind school committees of their duty to steward future generations. I see way too many reasonable people make the faulty assumption that future political cycles will rectify current actions. Prioritizing collective care is the best survival strategy, political climate be hecked. These youth whose identities some seek to ignore or validate don't get a do-over. We must stand up now, in this moment and every time we have the opportunity, to affirm that every youth is who they say they are and that they belong. You show them that belonging means having the right to co-create and make demands upon society. We urge you to get involved and let your actions speak for themselves. All youth are studying your actions, not just trans and gender expansive youth. Right now, your words and actions define whose safety is worthy of protection and which freedoms are worth defending. GSAs take nothing away from the classroom experience. They don't have to affect a school's budget. GSAs are a safe space where LGBTQIA+ two-spirit young people can congregate. They empower youth to embrace their individuality and find their voice. They're doing homework. They're doing their nails, talking about media, music. It's a weekly oasis during tumultuous times. Justice is what love looks like in public, and as we know, GSAs continue to be a necessary space to protect our young people. Thank you. So this is my first time here. Do I... Do people ask questions or no?
Yeah, so as a presentation, I can... We can hop into the school committee to see if they have any questions. Just one that I had was, as far as like if there were any exemplary, like, school districts in the state that you know of that are doing, you know, progressive, maybe like really supportive work as far as policies and what they're offering students?
Well, I mean, I know that there is... There's already recommendations across the state, but there's not really a... What is it? An enforcing arm of that? I mean, I think that that's... I hear more stories about youth who are feeling completely alienated from their schools, by their schools, than folks who are doing great jobs. I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for y'all to lead the way.
Sorry about the cold right now. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Great, thank you so much for being here. We greatly appreciate it.
Yep.
Also, we do have a rule at the North Kingstown Municipal Department that once you present, you are able to leave or comment, so anyone can abide by that at any point. Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. Pursuant to policy BE, individual comments are respectfully requested to be limited to five minutes. Mr. Case will keep time as our vice chair. And just a comment that the committee does not reply to citizens' comments. We do thoughtfully listen and then sometimes address things later in the agenda, but just know that we don't specifically reply. It is your uptime to speak to us, so. First up is Holly Quinn.
Good evening. My name is Holly Quinn. I am here to talk about Bridget Valverde's Senate Bill S-0633. I sent her an email today, so I'm gonna read it just as I sent to her. I've read your amendments to the above bill. It's good to finally be addressed, it's good to finally have this addressed after known issues in our district. I'd like to request we extend the verbiage to include teachers with any infractions, regardless if they resign or were terminated. I'd also like to request that the verbiage be added to include any and all records documentation of any credentialed or non-credentialed educator that has known infractions be disclosed to any future hiring authority. As all of you know, there's been several families in North Kingstown that have had issues with educators, and though we've witnessed those educators just wander around and move freely from what district to district, and we're told that the new districts don't have any access to their records or their infractions that they've had. So I think we owe it to all the kids in all the districts that they're safe emotionally and physically, and advocating and always for this transparency would secure that. So I just wanted to... I know it's in the agenda packet for discussion and for you guys to review, but it would just be great if you could just add that. just be great if you could just add that. That's just my thoughts, just from somebody who's had an issue in the district, and as we all know what happened a few years ago, so we don't want to keep trash... passing trash and having these kids be at risk at all this, and that goes for the entire state, not just NK. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sue.
Good evening. My name is Sue Warburton. I've been a teacher in North Kingston for nearly 25 years. Three years ago, there was an opening at Quinneset Elementary School, and I chose to go teach at that school after having taught in all of the other schools in North Kingston. It was a decision that I'm very happy with. I've come here tonight to tell you of the characteristics of Quinneset that quite frankly, a ride report card doesn't do. Quinneset has a principal who knows all of her children, all of their academic and social needs, and she cares deeply about all of them. Quinneset has dedicated teachers, support staff, specialists and a family center that work together to make the school a positive environment for students to grow and learn, and if I forgot somebody, I'm sorry. Quinneset has students that love their school, their friends, and the adults that teach them, the curriculum, and so very much more. Quinneset has students that are leaders. Quinneset has students that are funny, they're kind, they're hardworking, and they really love to have lunch with the adults in the building. Quinneset has families that care about their students and their education, and they trust us, all of us, all of the adults in the school, to teach them and care for their children. Quinneset is truly a wonderful community to be a part of. I'll leave you with this. I was out to dinner with my husband a few weeks ago, and a woman smiled and waved at me. She looked familiar, but honestly, I didn't know how I knew her. When she was leaving, she stopped by our table and asked me if I worked at Quinneset. She proceeded to tell me that she was a substitute teacher in the district and that Quinneset was such a warm and welcoming school. It's her favorite school to sub in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next one on the list is Hannah.
Hello, school committee members. My name is Hannah Brown, and I'm here on behalf of Indivisible Rhode Island and a concerned member of the North Kingston community. As we all know, our immigration population is under attack by the current administration, and it is the duty of our school committee to protect this population of individuals. Every child deserves the chance to learn in an environment free from fear. Unfortunately, immigrant enforcement near schools has created a climate of anxiety and instability for immigrant families in our community. Parents are afraid to drop their children off at school, students are distracted and distressed, unable to focus on their education, and these are not hypothetical situations, they're happening here and now. The Safe School Policy that is currently on the docket offers a powerful solution, and it ensures that schools remain safe havens of learning and child development, not fear. By prohibiting the collection of immigration information and setting clear protocols for handling ICE requests, this policy protects all students while upholding federal and state laws. It's not just a policy decision, it's a moral imperative. By passing this policy, you're affirming that our school stands with every student, no matter their background. You are sending a clear message that our district values safety, inclusion and the right to education. We ask you to support the Safe Schools Policy and join the growing number of districts across the country taking a stand for their students. Thank you.
After previous meetings, I'm sure you can guess that I'm here to comment a bit on redistricting and also touch on a policy that's coming up during this meeting and also a preschool decision. I'll try to keep it pretty concise, not repeat anything I've said in the past. First, I did want to mention that during the subcommittee meeting, the motion by Megan was very exciting for me because I thought that the motion that was put forward, which unfortunately is not well-received by most of the subcommittee, would have given the subcommittee time to work with refreshed data and really dig into the problem and come up with additional solutions. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. I do look forward to the update from the rest of the subcommittee activities today. I do have a few quick thoughts on upcoming policy as well as the preschool. The policy, I think, is actually really good, especially given the feedback you've recently gotten from the community. I think the policy JCAA regarding establishing school boundary lines is a really good step, if you guys were to vote and approve on it, towards building transparency, community involvement, and even getting community buy-in, regardless of which decision we end up going with in the long run. I think it'd be really good to show that kind of partnership. If you look at the current version of that policy, it's rather short, speaks to the goals, but it doesn't speak to the how. The preschool proposal that'll be voted on or discussed tonight, I'm not sure which. I think that's good, especially for the special education program. It sounds like that gives a lot of opportunity to the IP kids. It also is good for the preschool kids. It sounds like there'd be some room for expansion, and I think it's a good use of space and increases some of the flexibility at Fish and Cove as well. I promised to be concise, but I just wanted to let you guys know, I'll continue to show up, I'll continue to comment, especially related to plans on redistricting in the school. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Michael?
Hello. Mike Portal. So I just want to talk about a few things that are on the agenda today, actually pretty similar topics. So the first is the pre-K thing that's gonna be talked about today. I do like that. I saw what it does, it gives two class... There's a lot of positives with it, it gives two classrooms for positive pathways, which is always great. It's a great program, and then it actually gives us two... opens up two to three free rooms that could be used for Fish and Cove as for students, which right now, it's kind of underutilized school right now. Also wanted to talk a policy, again, that JCAA, the districting policy. So agree with a lot of what Sean says, it does increase transparency, better state's guidelines that show, you know, things have been thought through a little more. Comment I wanted to talk about was on it was, towards the end of it, the public communication portion of the policy kind of states that about the communication with the administration, who happens to be the head of the committee. So kind of blocking that communication kind of takes, unless I... Maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but it does kind of take away a little bit of community engagement in that fact, and the ability to put forward suggestions or anything that could lead to some new ideas that, you know, that haven't been discussed to this point. And going on that topic, redistricting, so, yeah, going off that point, so all the topics that kind of have been brought up, all the scenarios and the redistricting have kind of been similar so far that have been discussed, so kind of looking forward to seeing whatever new updates come today and seeing new scenarios discussed, more something similar to like phasing, just to disrupt a minimal amount of students. And that's actually all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I know.
My name is Logan Nicholas, and I am again here tonight to speak on behalf of the families of Reynolds Farm, like the two men before me. My purpose and efforts tonight are to shed a bit more factual insight on the numbers regarding performance and rankings from moving from a top school district in the town-state to one of the lowest performing based on what's online. So before I move forward, I would like to make it very clear, my objective is not to put down the families of one district. I truly feel this move is just as great of a disservice to them as anyone else, but I will also not pretend this move does not have negative implications on my family or neighbors. So again, I do realize that there are families of, you know, the proposed Quinneset district here tonight, and really happy to hear your thoughts as well, so thanks for coming. I have heard multiple times the stated need to increase numbers at Quinneset, something that hasn't been presented, is how many voluntary transfers are there currently from Quid? What does this number look like in relation to the other elementary schools in our town, and what is the reasoning for these transfers? Would be something good to see. There continues to be this narrative that Quid is comparable to the other elementary schools, and that one bad number can set a low rating. This is just not the case. Looking at the school improvement plan for 2024-25, which our current school at Fish and Cove does not have, current ELA is at 29%, meeting math expectations 27.4%, chronically absent or truant 26%, and science proficiency 31%. I and the rest of the parents of Reynolds Farm are supposed to see these numbers and be satisfied or accepting of this current transfer from one high achieving, you know, school in academics? I am not. As mentioned in my last commentary, throwing more kids at an issue will not help those students that are currently struggling. Looking at the current push for Proposal B for, I'm not really sure what the name of it is now, there are already massive number discrepancies that put Fish and Cove over capacity in multiple grades, shifting the problems of one school to the next. The thinking that a forceful move of the Reynolds Farm neighborhood is going to fix this lack of capacity issue at Quid is unreasonable. I'm sure, like many others already aligned with the Quid district, there's going to be a massive influx of requests to transfer, or families who are already paying top dollar for houses and taxes in this town, having to move... having to use more of their hard-earned money to put our kids into a private school. We are a young family that purchased on... based on a district. Young incoming families to this town will not be looking to purchase in our neighborhood with the shift, with the high costs that come with our neighborhood. I've had the pleasure of speaking with many individuals who can vouch for the great educators of Quinneset Elementary. No one is doubting their capabilities, but there is a greater need for their attention to be geared toward the interventions of behavior modification of current students. There have... Teachers there have more to do in a typical day because, besides the current curriculum, they have the additional task of behavior management as well. I know that the academic learning and achievements will always take a backseat to the emotional needs of their peers. Please continue to strategize and coordinate a proposal that meets the needs and best interests of all students. This school committee, not this specific group, but this committee has a history of making decisions with the ultimate outcome of moving kids and neighborhoods around. Don't we think it's time to come up with a more well-thought-out, longstanding solution that does not interrupt the lives and the families that make up the community of this town? Thank you for your time.
Laura? Yeah, let's close it. We broke before you all. You can leave yours, Josh, I don't care. I'm good though.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura.
Just give us one second. I just wanted to be able to give you your full... our full attention.
Yep, sorry about that.
Thanks, Laura.
That's good. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Nicholas. I needed some time to review the proposals from the last subcommittee, and with that, I have a little bit to talk about. I am here to reiterate the need to slow down on moving North Kingston students around from one elementary to another. When the idea was presented and the redistricting committee was determined to work together for two years, there was a reason behind this. It can take time. We need to take the time to think of different options or slow down to brainstorm, does redistricting need to happen? Will changes benefit our students and families of North Kingston? What is the end goal with these rushed decisions? If we look at Option A, Fish and Cove is over two students for kindergarten. This can be solved by moving one of the 5K teachers from Stony Lane that will not be needed due to the lower number of students in the upcoming kindergarten enrollment class. The only other grade of concern is the 5th grade, with numbers showing three students over. This number remains the same with Option B, since all 5th graders will be able to remain at their current schools. Option B places Fish and Cove students in every grade except for the 4th grade in the purple and orange colors. As we know, this means close to capacity or overcapacity. This number now totals 14 overcapacity. How does this change make sense? We are moving one overcapacity problem from one school to another. This does not solve anything. Option A, no changes with the exception of sending voluntary students back to their home schools only reads an overage of students in kindergarten by seven students at Hamilton. As discussed, the student-to-teacher ratio and the classroom capacity increases with grade level. If we leave students where they are, with the exception of kindergarten students, who will need to be temporarily voluntary transferred, they can return to their home schools for grades 1 to 5 with minimal disruption to their social and academic success. 64K students at Hamilton can successfully stay in their school from 1st to 5th grade as their total classroom capacity in these grades ranges from 72 to 104 students. Help us understand why an overcapacity classroom for one grade requires the redistricting of many families, including changes within three schools. Families have chosen to buy their home for a specific school. Families have spent years to financially plan and provide the best education and school environment for their children to thrive in. Parents who moved to North Kingston have planned and researched where they want to buy their forever home, to provide their children a home where they can find their school family. Why are we going to disrupt these connections they have worked so hard to build to have them broken and start over again? We want our children to feel they can trust their schools and feel safe. If we uproot them from their teachers and friends, this is going to negatively impact them socially, emotionally and academically. To make... To name a few negative impacts, disrupting friendships, increased family stress with change in routines and a children's sense of belonging. Numbers fluctuate year to year. Again, let's pause, please. These are children. Let's put ourselves in their shoes. Change is hard. Let's not execute a plan that can cause more stress for the schools, students and their families. Thank you.
Giovanni?
Just wanted to say, obviously echo everything my neighbors have said, you know, from Reynolds Farm, and at the end of the day, also just made it, you know, Megan's motion kind of going the other way, you know, during that subcommittee meeting, I thought it was a really good thing to do. But again, just a reminder, Giovanni Rodriguez live in Reynolds Farm, got a six-year-old in fishing and a one-year-old that I hope to send there pretty soon, and really, a couple of things that I wanted to comment on tonight were really around the redistricting proposal, long-term impacts of what that might have on, not only in North Kingston, but also, you know, our families, my own family, neighbors, everyone else involved in North Kingston. Really, at the heart of the debate here, I think ultimately, is really a fundamental question, and that's really around, are we solving a capacity issue at Hamilton by simply shifting the burden elsewhere? Or are we taking this opportunity to really make choices that serve all students equitably, right? I would... I think, you know, when you think about North Kingston, its growth, what it's going through, this seems to be this redistricting thing, the thing that's gone on for decades, right? Simply just gonna draw some lines, put people elsewhere. No one really, really wants to work on the tough issues of what it means to solve this type of thing, aside from just redrawing lines. And for us, I think representation's a really big deal, right? Especially for Reynolds Farm, and you know how we've been including certain policies that move us over to Quinneset, and right now, that's, you know, certainly something that we're against, right? Especially as it relates around, when we think about redistricting and moving families to Quinneset from Reynolds Farm, you know, diversity's a big thing, right? It's a big topic, I'm gonna harp on it all the time, right? And it turns out, you know, as I've been in North Kingston, our neighborhood happens to be a pretty diverse neighborhood, you know? I was just at my daughter's bus stop the other morning, it was seven of 12 kids, noticeably diverse, right? When you think about moving our neighborhood to Quinneset, right, and doing so, you'd be shifting diverse students away from a school where they contribute meaningfully to a student body and replacing them with students from Hamilton who are, let's face it, overwhelmingly white, right? This would not only make Fish and Cove less diverse, but it would also funnel more minority students into Quinneset, a school that's already around 50% diverse. The reason that that is important, right? Why does this matter? Is that research overwhelmingly shows that students in diverse learning environments perform better, right? Not just academically, but also socially. Exposure to different backgrounds and perspective at early age leads to stronger problem-solving skills, greater empathy and a better ability to navigate an increasingly diverse world. If we go forward with any plan that moves Reynolds Farm to Quinneset, we're just gonna be isolating diverse students in our community instead of integrating them, which is a huge issue, right? Is that truly what the town stands for? I would hope not, right? And a little bit off the cuff, but I would implore everyone to go view the end of last week's personal executive session on personnel matter, which is not for here, for any of that type of stuff, but listen to the words of the mother that spoke at the end of that session, right? I think when you hear that and what that child had to endure on the bus, and again, it was a Fish and Cove bus, it just goes to show why diversity matters and why keeping this integration is very important. But, you know, that also, when I talk about diversity leading to good academic outcomes, like, let's talk about academic outcomes, right? And again, this is not an affront on teachers at Quinneset. I'm sure they're great, you know? Again, my wife is an educator, been 15 years, does early childhood pre-K, and she would say the same thing, you know, can guarantee that the educators at Quinneset probably really enjoy the work that they do, the problems that they're solving there, what they are, all that kind of stuff. But, as some of my other neighbors stated, you know, when you think about rankings, you know, it's the reason we move to certain places. When you think about the ranking of Quinneset, it compares to other Providence schools, which I can't imagine has a good connotation to it. That ranking is not just a number, though, right? It's an indication of resources, support and academic opportunities our children will receive by moving from one to the other. The families that are being asked to move are not being asked to simply be shuffled around to another school, they're being sent to one that has consistently struggled to provide the same level of education and outcomes very clearly through that ranking. Anecdotally, as I might have mentioned last time, you know, I've gotten to talk to a lot of people, both Hamilton parents, parents from all around different neighborhoods, but especially in the Quinneset area. And for me, and again, this is anecdotal, right, you know, there's probably some data behind this, there are some parents that hope through this process their kids get redistricted to Forest Park, right? There are, you know, parents that I've met that actually... You know, Reynolds Farm's something, is a place that's certainly very much growing, right? Hundreds of homes, hundreds of apartments, you know, another 80 or so more to come within that third phase. What I'd say is that what North Kingstown has done by approving a lot of this, is essentially created, you know, a very big neighborhood, right? A neighborhood with some overwhelmingly, I think, voting power ultimately. And I think, one of the things that, you know, we're certainly paying attention to locally, is what that means for next cycles and elections, you know, if we don't feel that we're being represented. So, you know, I implore everyone here, urging
Sorry, just gonna wrap up.
Yep, just wrapping up here, you know, urge everyone to really rethink, slow down, right? You know, really think about the problem that we're solving, you know, does this really solve overcrowding? You know, are we undermining the education, diversity, and stability of everything that we've worked so hard to build? That's, I'm all set. Thank you.
Teresa?
Yep. You're a very nice guy, but I couldn't, we're good.
Chairperson Earl, school committee members, and Dr. Duvva, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I did watch the budget presentation to the town council, and I wanted to give a few key examples which demonstrate the bias of the current subcommittee on start times transportation and redistricting. I hope these examples communicate the need for the subcommittee to be expanded to include stakeholders from each of the affected communities. Currently, there are no grade school parents who are affected by the redistricting proposals on this subcommittee. Personally, I've, I've had to expand my own perspective to understand where other parents are coming from. For example, when a father from Reynolds Farm spoke during the last subcommittee meeting, inviting us to look at the diversity of his neighborhood, my husband and I did just that. We drove around and witnessed a unique piece of North Kingstown that has a beautiful diversity, which is so important to the Fishing Cove school. In addition, we noted that the drive from Reynolds Farm to Fishing Cove crosses one major intersection, heads in through a little neighborhood, and heads to the school. Conversely, if you drive to Quidd Nesset from Reynolds Farm, you go over the overpass, past several large intersections, thus truly going into a completely different neighborhood, one which is adjacent to Forest Park Elementary, which is also overcrowded, not Fishing Cove. Myself and the others in our North Kingstown community certainly hope that despite the national tone, diversity in education is going to be protected here in North Kingstown. What the community is witnessing with the voluntary and consequently involuntary transfer system, which Dr. Duvva brought up at the last subcommittee meeting with emails he had received, we're wondering if this system, what is happening with it? Are we depriving North Kingstown of diversity and education, and will it be dismantled? Could the school board be transparent about the numbers of voluntary transfers into Hamilton Elementary? From the data, we can only guess that it's around 30 students. What schools are they coming from? Does the lack, due to the lack of information regarding the ethnicity in our data and the transfer of students, there is a natural bias on the subcommittee, that the movement of any students to any school is okay, since we are just looking at distances and bus routes. Two additional perspectives which are missing from the subcommittee are the lack of the affected parents and the key affected staff representation. Currently, there is no parent on the subcommittee whose child will be affected by any of the scenarios being discussed. It seems to our community that at least one parent from a current grade schooler from each of the affected neighborhoods should be represented at minimal. They can express specifically the student and family considerations of any transfer of schools. In the arena of staff representation, Dr. Rachel Santa is the staff member, one of the staff members representing Fishing Cove, but her perspective is on removing students from the school. There does not seem to be representation from teachers of Fishing Cove or the principal, who would be impacted by the influx of new students. In short, perhaps all of the scenarios appear equally appealing to the current subcommittee, because the movement of these children does not negatively impact their families or current employment. I want to encourage what Megan proposed, a slow and thoughtful process. As a final suggestion, to preserve diversity and help students in the clinical day program be immersed into a larger classroom, could we allow students in the current Davisville Academy to alleviate some overcrowding, and, so to bring in students from throughout the district into Davisville Academy with the current day program, to help alleviate the Stony Lane and Forest, and Forest Park overcrowding? Thank you for your time.
Hannah?
Sorry. I was like looking, I was like, yeah, sorry. No worries.
I am here tonight to discuss recent policies. The last time I spoke, I shared concerns about the safe schools policy. I appreciate that significant revisions have been made, making the policy much clearer. I also want to acknowledge the positive step the school department has taken in sending emails with links to policies when they are in their second reads. This promotes transparency and ensures that families and community members are aware of proposed changes. Transparency is critical, and while this is a step in the right direction, I believe there also needs to be broader transparency when it comes to redistricting schools. Many people I have spoken to rely on social media for information. They are going to different social media pages instead of official websites, because they can't navigate the official websites or find the information there. I hope with the new school committee clerk position, a focus could be made how to better disseminate information. I have also been reviewing the policy on school attendance boundary lines. It is evident that there is an effort to address the failures of the last redistricting process six years ago, which lacked transparency and meaningful community participation. As a parent whose children were affected by that process, I truly appreciate this attempt to improve it. Back then, only one plan was presented, with minimal consideration of alternatives, and I strongly advocated for other options, and hope that that is done this time as well. However, I do have concerns. As with our policies, I find this one overly specific, crossing into procedural details rather than remaining a guiding framework. A policy should establish objectives and overall direction, while procedures provide the detailed steps for implementation. If policies become too specific, they risk becoming quickly obsolete as circumstances evolve. Broader policies remain relevant longer and require less frequent updates. If the intent, intent of this policy is to account for every consideration, then I believe it should explicitly state that every effort should be made to avoid redistricting the same area twice in a row. Since proximity to schools is a key factor, there is a risk that areas farther from schools will repeatedly be impacted. Unfortunately, some parts of our town are not close to any schools, making this an even greater concern. Taking a step back and looking at the root cause of these reoccurring policy concerns, I believe the makeup of the policy subcommittee is a major issue. The subcommittee, as it stands, is inequitable. Policies, policies impact a broad and diverse group of people, yet the decision-making body does not reflect that diversity. A more equitable, equitable subcommittee, one that includes additional stakeholders, would allow for more comprehensive discussions and creative problem-solving. When people from different areas of the community are involved, they bring different perspectives, helping to identify potential issues that might otherwise be overlooked. This enhances the legitimacy, legitimacy of the policymaking process. Right now, the policy subcommittee consists of only four members, two school administrators and two school committee members. This composition is inequitable. While the perspectives of these members are valuable, the lens of the committee is too narrow. Without representation from the broader community, the policymaking process lacks the input needed to create well-rounded policies that truly reflect the needs of those they impact, including community members, would make the process more equitable and strengthen public trust in the policies that emerge from it. An inequitable subcommittee leads to inequitable policies. It is perplexing that such an important body has been formed in a way that excludes direct community representation. If we truly want policies that serve everyone fairly, we must ensure that process itself is equitable from the start. Thank you.
Ron?
Good evening. My name is Ron Wheaton. I don't have a prepared speech, but I am concerned about the redistricting, like a lot of people are, it seems. Because I read the article in the Standard Times last week, and some of the decisions don't make any sense to me. Either this is written wrong, or it seems like you're redistricting kids that are the closest to Hamilton Elementary School to Fishing Cove. According to this, you've got kids living from Beach Street down to Bissell Cove, within a half, anything over, under, from a half a mile up to a mile and a quarter, I think it was, or a mile and a half, to be relocated to Fishing Cove. That doesn't make any sense at all. You're gonna have to bus kids that are actually in walking district right now. I don't have children in the school, but I live in, on Terrama. Lot of the kids that live on Shady Cove, where Rustic Way crosses, they all walk to the same neighbor's house, because they cut through their yard, enter through a break in the stone wall at the back of the school, and they're literally standing on school property. They're feet away from the school, but if you do a Google search, it's a half a mile to go out, all the way out onto Route, to Post Road and walk around. You're gonna redistrict those children to Fishing Cove when they're literally hundreds of feet away from the school? That makes no sense. And the same is true with some of the areas around Anna Quetucket. And if they make that stupid decision to put a rotary where Brown Street meets Philip Street, that's gonna be a disaster, running buses through there unnecessarily, when they're literally in walking district to the school. I don't understand how that could have made, that decision could have been made, unless this is written incorrectly. That's pretty much all I wanted to discuss. So I hope that somebody's gonna look at this logically and realize, why would you move children that are that close to the school, to a school that far away unnecessarily, when there's probably plenty of areas that are even closer to Fishing Cove, that you can relocate those children that are not quite that far away? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
That's the end of the list. Is there anyone else here to speak for citizens' advocates? Okay, thank you very much. And so the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Yes. People said more, I think so much. Yeah, but if anybody wants to move up their seats, they're welcome.
I'm gonna go with some school highlights that have happened since the last script meeting. At Quidd Nesset, Quidd Nesset held their 5th grade science fair on March 12th. Students were excited about their learning and did an amazing job presenting. Grades 4 and 5 started to compost during breakfast and lunch. Mrs. Johnston is impressed with how important the students understand this initiative, and that so many have risen to become leaders as part of the Get the FOMO grant and work that we're doing in all the schools.
You have to keep it open, sorry. I know, it's just like the law, it's tricky. Yeah, maybe just open it, and then maybe just ask folks to move down if they're gonna tug in the hallway. Thank you.
Stony Lane provided an update on their composting waste, so the March composting waste audit. This, again, is part of the Get the FOMO grant that we were working on across the district. Liquids increased from 8.2 pounds to 10 pounds. That's less that, that's going into the trash. Recyclables increased from 5.5 pounds.
No, sorry, sorry, Ken, we have, we have to have it open open. The lawyer gave me a look. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, sorry, Ken, go ahead.
That's okay. Recyclables increased by 2 pounds. Landfill waste increased from 12.9 pounds to 18 pounds. We actually want to see that going
Yeah, it feels like a knock.
The other way.
Yep, yep.
Compost increased from 30 pounds to 33 pounds. So the compost, that's good, we want compost, you know, more composting, but the landfill waste did go up, it did go up instead of going down. But, they're all working on that. Composting for our garden, for the Sterling Garden, has also increased to a collection of 8 pounds. It's going really well, and has been going much better than before the prior company that they had that they were using, so they've switched, and that's been helpful. Also at Stony Lane, Mr. Dewire, who is the music teacher there, they received a grant. Their recent grant money obtained for their Sterling Music classes helped them purchase stands for every mallet instrument, as well as some new instruments. Now they can rapidly change the layout of their classroom, and that has been an absolute game-changer for the experience and opportunities for the students. I'll find out what, right? At North Kingstown High School, the Academic Decathlon. The North Kingstown High School Academic Decathlon team competed at Bryant University. Overall, their team took 20 individual medals, 7 gold, 8 silver, and 5 bronze, and the team won the super quiz event. Students that are noted are Sadie McCann, who had the highest overall team, was the highest overall team scorer, and the second highest point scorer in the state in the honors category. Candace Smith was the highest overall point scorer in the state in the varsity category. And Lily Hannah, Hannah Cella was the third highest point scorer in the varsity category in the state. I want to thank all of our students for participating, and I also want to thank Mrs. Erickson, who is the student, the teacher advisor. She's one of the science teachers at the high school, and she's the advisor for the Academic Decathlon. Also, in athletics, the North Kingstown High School Girls Varsity Basketball Game, Basketball Team recently won their state championship, and they also participated in the Final Four over the last week, so congratulations to the girls' basketball team for being Division One champs. At Hamilton Elementary School, the Hamilton Chess Team played in the state open championship on Saturday, and was led by the performances of Logan, Nolan, Wyler, and Jimmy, and they ended up tying with the Wyler School for second place with 8 points. As a result of tiebreakers, Hamilton ended up winning third place overall in the state open championship. Nolan finished fourth among all Rhode Island residents, and as a result, will play in the closed six-player tournament in April. Congratulations to Nolan. The winner of which will be the Rhode Island champion and travel to play in the national championships. I also want to just note that the school department was, was involved in the NK Day at the State House, that was last week, and we had teachers from high school, as well as students that were there to represent North Kingstown, to put on a little display. We had members from the robotics team, from our DECA, Arts Department. Some students brought in their democracy projects, and we also had representation from the culinary program. It was really nice to see everyone there, as well as the teachers. Robotics set up their robot, showed off some of their awards. Our Arts Department brought in some art, and also showed off some of the awards that we've been receiving. So I just want to thank them for coming, and just note that. And also thank Ben Blank, who is one of our musicians, he's a pianist, and he played piano at the State House in the lounge before the opening. The high school is also working with our elementary school. So, we have an education program we started this year, and part of the education program, we're working with our special education department, our special education classes. They're helping to promote Unified Week, which is about inclusion, and inclusion throughout the schools, and equity, and diversity, and we have, for the second year, a Unified Week at the high school. It's coming up next, next, I've got a few sort of dates for you. The week of March 22nd, they will have a unified basketball game that you're all invited to attend on March 27th at 9:00 AM at the high school. So if you're able to go, that's happening then. Part of this, what they're doing is, they're going up into the elementary schools and talking about what does it mean to be, to be inclusive. And I went to Fishing Cove last week, Mrs. Law- I put on a little display. We had members from the robotics team from our DECA. Arts Department, some students brought in their democracy projects, and we also have representation from the culinary program. It was really nice to see everyone there as well as the teachers. Robotics set up their robot, showed off some of their awards. Our arts department brought in some art and also showed off some of the awards that we've been receiving. So I just want to thank them for coming and just note that. And also thank Ben Blank, who is one of our musicians. He's a pianist, and he played piano at the State House in the lounge before the opening. The high school is also working with our elementary school. So we have an education program we started this year, and part of the education program we're working with our special education department, our special education classes. They're helping to promote Unified Week, which is about inclusion and inclusion throughout the schools and equity and diversity. And we have, for the second year, a Unified Week at the high school. It's coming up next, sort of the dates for you. The week of March 22nd. They will have a unified basketball game that you're all invited to attend on March 27th at 9:00 AM at the high school. So if you're able to go, that's happening then. Part of this, what they're doing is they're going up into the elementary schools and talking about what does it mean to be, to be inclusive. And I went to Fishing Cove last week. Mrs. Laughlin reached out to us and said, you know, can you come? And then we went to watch, and it was really nice to see how the high schools coming out, working with the elementary students, talking about inclusiveness, inclusion, what is that? And not just about disabilities, but inclusion of all students. And the kids were involved. They had bracelets that they're handing out about every K we belong that they do as part of the Unified Week. And I talked with the kids that came out to present, and I said, what schools are you going to? They're trying to get in all. And they were still kind of scheduling. I said, you really need to get in all the schools. It's great to see what we're doing, great to get the elementary kids involved with what the high school's doing, and really go out there and talk about inclusion and what that means. And showing that we, as a community, are welcoming to all students and all without people within our community and our schools. So I just wanted to highlight that, that work that's happening at the high school and going down to the elementary school. And lastly, if you did not see the play last weekend, North Theater, which is our theater program at the high school, they're performing Legally Blonde. It was amazing. There's a lot of talent that we have with our students, actors, from the actors' actors on the stage to the tech crew to the musicians in the pit. And Miss Floyd Clare, who's the director, and Miss Neary, who's the assistant director choreographer. It was a great performance. So just get out there, go see the kids this weekend. They're performing Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions regarding the superintendent report? Thank you. Lots of great stuff happening in dress to all our students. Okay, moving on to routine items. Does anyone want to exempt anything before we approve the consent agenda? Just kidding. Can Ollie sneaks in? Can I get a motion to seal the executive minutes of March 18th? And I'll dispose that there was no vote taken today.
Some votes.
You can go with Sheri on that one. It was a hardcore aye. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. You don't have to, but that's what I would do. All right, so for affirmative, and then Ms. Lima's abstaining because she was not present. Thank you. Now, to the consent agenda, does anyone want to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Here, Ken, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some votes.
One second. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ken, you have the guests from right here. Do you want us to move that one up to be next? Yeah, okay, so I was, I was going to propose before we do the reports, we have our guest from right here to talk about the stage two applications. So can I get a motion to move that to be the next agenda item?
Some votes.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There he is. Why don't we take a quick five-minute recess? Because you.
Yeah, just because of me?
Well, you were the one that wanted to.
I was literally about two seconds.
Okay. Okay, Rob says we can go, so we'll go. A little welcome. Do you want to introduce yourselves just for the record?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mario Coraño, Chief Operations Officer for Ride, here with Brian Lemay, Senior Project Manager. He's also a North Kingstown parent, resident taxpayer. I'm also a fellow school committee member for Lincoln. Before we start, I want to shout out to Stephanie Russo, who I believe is the best HR director in the state. You have her, and you stole our high school principal, Mr. Messina, a couple of years ago, and we still miss you. So you're still missed.
We wish you the best of luck with your superintendent.
Yes, yes. Thank you. But yeah, we're here to answer any questions. We can do an overview of where we are, some of the efforts that we're trying to make to ensure that your entire bond gets reimbursement. That's one of the perspectives we take, especially not just from the state, but we approach this always from a district lens because we understand that every dollar that gets reimbursement is more likely you can do something else with that. We don't have a pre-planned presentation. The idea was to come and answer whatever questions the committee had, and then we could go from, from there based on whatever questions that you asked.
Yeah, perfect. First, thank you so much for being willing to come down here. We know you're both super busy, and thank you for all your support thus far. It was obviously a long journey for North Kingstown with the different stage one and stage two applications that we've been working on over the past couple of years as we navigated the bond process. And so we know that you all were extremely helpful in, in that process, and we really appreciate it. I think, just for, we have some new committee members that have joined us since we kind of started this process, as well as kind of getting a better understanding of what happens at this point. And so if you don't mind just giving kind of a quick overview of kind of what you were talking about with the stage two applications, and particularly what you mentioned about the, you know, questions maybe regarding the bond reimbursement and the different pieces, just so that we have some clarity, and then I'll open it up for questions from the committee.
Sure. And this also is for others in the audience. So this applies to every single school district who wants state aid, but in essence, you have to complete a multi-stage process to get approval for reimbursement. So stage one is simply identification of need, right? You look at all your buildings, you look at the ages, the conditions, you look at your demographics, to see how many kids you will be serving in five years, not how many you serve now or used to serve. And that's a standard process. It's been around for 15 years. Once you advance to stage two, that's where you begin to propose solutions to those needs, right? And the solutions can be different for every community based on, again, your buildings, your level of resources. We know that most communities have building needs that far exceed the money that is available. I know you were approved for, I think, 137. You likely have needs that far exceed 137 million. As part of this process, it helps you to prioritize and ensure that, at least in this case, I think you're targeting anywhere from 35 to 40% reimbursement based on your projects. Once you're approved, and I think you're scheduled for Ride consideration this May, you already have voter approval. I believe you also already have general assembly approval. So once you are approved this May, you would enter into a contract with Ride. It's known as the memorandum of agreement. It gives you five years to do your projects. And the, what I mentioned about reimbursement, so some of the early feedback from your application were that the costs were perhaps higher than we're seeing in other places. And the feedback we have proposed has been designed, or ear, like, the purpose of it is, has been to have your vendors perhaps approach the project a little bit differently, to have costs that are more in line with others across the state. That does two things. Number one, it ensures that a greater, and hopefully all of your project would be eligible for reimbursement, but if we're able to reduce costs, you have needs, again, in other buildings that you're not even scratching the surface. Let's not pretend that this bond is going to do that. So if you can really right-size that middle school, then some of that, those resources could go somewhere else. One of the main ideas that we have at least posed for the architects to look at is the concept of a third floor of a middle school. It's cheaper to build up than it is to build out. And because of the differential between what we would approve and what it's costing you, that we were surprised that that option hasn't been developed. Where in other communities, when we suggest recommendations, including those that would save you millions of dollars, that those recommendations would be at least looked at. I'm not positive if that option has been developed or hasn't, but that is the, if there's one thing to listen to today, is you are still in the approval process, you have really not started your design. That begins after stage three, that if, if that were a priority of the school committee and of your administration, that you would give a really hard look at a variety of options for that project that would perhaps get you closer to the Ride reimbursement number, reduce costs, and then allow you to just pick up other, other projects. So that's, before any questions, that's just an overview of our process and what I'm assuming is one of the reasons that we've been asked to come here today to answer questions.
Great, thank you very much. I'll open up to the committee questions.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Can you explain to us whether or not North Kingstown qualified for any pay-go funding? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Yes, so the answer's zero, because you, you have applied, you haven't even received Ride approval yet. The pay-go funds expired in December of '23.
Okay, so, so even, and we hadn't done the state.
Yeah, I could look. Your 2018, I'm going off memory. Your 2018 approval may have had a small piece. I mean, we can, we can verify that, but like, for your larger project, the answer is no. Perhaps a very small piece for that one. I can, I can follow up in writing after this meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I do have another question. In a lot of our meetings, we've been talking about how we submit to stage two, and when we receive back from you, stage three, we're kind of, for lack of a better term, on our own. You know, we can do the design however we want. I know that we talked about possibly when we submit to you saying that Wickford Middle is going to have X amount of students, but that, you know, I, I know the suggestion from Ride was to go up to 525, and what originally we had thought 400. So in stage three, let's say we say, okay, we're going to fit, you know, 525, but then in stage three, we come back. The understanding I got from our OPM was that it's kind of like, oh, yeah, you can change the design, you can kind of change anything from stage two to stage three once you've gotten that approval. That seemed like an interesting statement that was made, and I'd kind of like some clarification on that, because my question is more, what kind of oversight does Ride then have in stage three if we were told that we can just design what we want after we submit stage two and get approval?
Yes, so that, that information you've been provided is false. So after you receive stage two approval, there's still three other approvals from Ride. That's schematic design, design development, and 60% construction documents to make sure that the project remains on track. A lot of the work hasn't even started yet. So it would be, it wouldn't make any sense for the state, who's paying in many cases, right, for some communities upwards of 90% to just let things go on their own. So that's not a true.
Can I clarify what was said, because I don't think it really was stated that way, and I don't think that, I don't believe that is what she meant. I think what she was trying to say, and it goes on what you said, that we're not in the design stage yet. So once we have stage two approval, we can change the design, but throughout every stage, we still have to go back to Ride. She never said we don't have to go back to Ride. What she said was we can make changes to that afterwards.
Right, and that's, and that's my question.
But, so, so if we have to change the design of the building in stage three, is that allowed? If you approve.
Yeah, so like, there's, yes, so in some communities.
So you can make changes from what is approved. So what Ride approves is in stage two is the funding source.
So it's both. Like, it's, it's, we approve a line, and like, it'll say Wickford Middle School with a number, and that's what you approve for that project. There are other communities who have vendors for stage two and hire a different vendor for stage three and change the design of an approved project with an approved location. That, that has happened before. As long as you're doing a new middle school, there are changes that will come through. Once you start getting cost estimates, you will likely be forced to make your own changes because you may not be able to afford what you've done to date.
But if we need to make changes within the project or anything through stage three, we can do that, but it still needs to go to Ride for approval.
That's right.
That was exactly my question. That's why I was asking Mario. She said that she had done a project, I was sitting right here and she said it, that that change from stage two to stage three. What was not clarified, which is what I'm trying to clarify directly with you, is whether or not, after the change was made, does Ride have to approve it? And does it have to, what kind of oversight do you have in terms of the change of our design? So I just, that's honestly one of the reasons I wanted Mario to come and present to us, because I do have some of these very specific questions about the oversight from Ride specifically. So thank you for clearing that up.
Other questions on the committee?
I have one more question. Because I'm actually, I, I've been very appreciative of the feedback that you have given us, Mario, and even just what you said right now about how you were surprised about the third floor hasn't, you know, yet been discussed as an option. How much are we, as a district, relying on, you know, you and your insight and feedback? Because you've given us a couple of suggestions that, like I said, I think have been really good suggestions, you know, to, to bring to our vendors. So are you more just a high-level oversight, or are you really working hand-in-hand with us behind the scenes?
No, we do both. We've had multiple meetings with the district and, and the architects. We have others. We have architects on staff, we have engineers. Like, we have, like, we can go in-depth. Part of it is, is the desire of the, like, how many meetings they want. Some districts want us to help the whole time, and we have, in some cases, weekly meetings with some communities. We have others where it's monthly, some they might not show up for months. So, but we've shared this feedback directly with the architect. To my knowledge, none of the changes have, or very few have been incorporated.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of my concern is, you know, I look at you as more an objective party who is really trying to help the district be the most cost-effective and be the best stewards financially to the entire taxpayer community. So I think, yeah, it is really helpful that we are working with you because obviously, you know, the vendors have, you know, they're a for-profit company, and, you know, they have their own best interests in mind first and foremost naturally. So, yeah, this, this is good feedback to get, to be getting from you, and I do hope that we take some of this stuff into consideration.
One question I had, Mario, was you mentioned that you were saying that the costs were higher than others in the state. Who are you benchmarking us against for other middle schools?
So we, some of these comments were based, like, you have a independent cost estimate that was provided as part of your stage two. Some of the comments were on, for example, the demolition costs were like three times higher than we've seen in other places. There were contingencies on top of other contingencies, which starts to escalate. Yeah, and so these were comments just based on what we saw. We also look at, we have, I mean, we have access to all the independent estimates that come in. The most recent project, and it wasn't directly a middle school, but Providence's building and it has built, I believe, we took the district there to see Spaziano Elementary School for 600 kids at a cost of around $44 million, which is a three-story building. This is almost twice the cost for less kids. Like, some of the, some of these are, are flags that we have raised that should at least warrant more exploration. It doesn't, and we're not telling you to do a third floor. We're saying you should at least have the option to discuss whether the third floor is appropriate because you still need, ultimately, town council has to agree to actually issue the financing. So while it's common in some cases, especially for high schools, to have, like Warwick, for example, wanted additional seats in their auditorium that we don't reimburse, but the town says we, we demand that. Or East Providence wanted extra athletic fields. It's something very concrete, and that might be maybe 5% of above what Ride approves. In this case, we're trending towards over 20%. That, like, again, that's why we're, we are flagging this one as, as something that may be worthy of some extra due diligence, and again, not telling you to go to three stories, but you should at least have the options to compare and then decide if it is cheaper, like, what's the opportunity cost of, of using the more expensive building? Because again, you have a lot of elementary schools that need a lot of love that, that don't look like this building here.
This one's rented, if you're curious.
So thank, thank you for that. That's helpful in my, for, for what I was looking for. The other question that I had was about, so the part that you just mentioned about with other, with towns making intentional decisions knowing that they're not going to get the full reimbursements, which has been the part, part of the conversation that we've always been having. And so with that said, though, can you give me a little bit more clarification about how what we are asking for, which I, I believe is some additional space in the, is it gymnasium? Yeah, in the gymnasium to be able, because our educators really said that they wanted to be able to have a space where all the, the school community could gather and, and be able to have things in their building versus having to go to the high school or whatnot. And so trying to balance, you know, what the educators are telling us and, and what we were doing as far as budget-wise, we always knew that we were not going to get full reimbursement on that space. The question that I am hoping to get some clarification on, though, is you're saying that we're at over 20%, where you typically see about 5%. And so can you clarify why that is? Because that, like, I, I know we're making an intentional decision to make it a little bit bigger because of what our town needs, but can you explain that difference?
Yeah, and, and I think this is, this one's a unique one because it's not like you're planning to build something larger than our regulations. You act, you're trying to, you're actually building something smaller, which is, which raised the first flag. In other places like East Province, they wanted a building that was larger than, than our regulations would allow, right? And then they intentionally chose to have a really massive athletic complex and all these other items. That's not the case with this project. The square feet that are being proposed is less than Ride would even approve. So the cost driver here is the square foot cost that we have flagged as being very high. I think it's approached 1,000 a square feet. We're not seeing those prices around the state, which is, again, a, a red flag as to, like, look at the estimate. Is it, is it the design? Do you need to reconsider? Like, you've had that team for a while. I don't know, there's a lot of questions here. In terms of the 20% number, so if we're figuring that the estimated round, it's 77 million is the current, I think, price tag for your middle school. If we would, without even reviewing the documents, like, that came in in February, some came in as, as late as last Friday, once that's reviewed, like, if we were to approve 61 or 62 million, that represents 20% of your project, wouldn't get Ride reimbursement. In other places, like Warwick, for example, they were approved for, I think, like 320 million, and they did like 340. So at scale, it's, it's almost what you're losing, but they're doing way more work. So in their case, they, there's other scopes that they wanted that were bigger than would we allow, but that's not a great comparison to what we're seeing here. but that's not a great comparison to what we're seeing out here.
So with your recommendation, are you saying, don't build what we need? Like I just am trying to understand, like the assignment, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, so I, I would, uh, and perhaps you can ask the architect or the superintendent. So we have made a series of, of recommendations through multiple meetings now to at least have an option that would come in closer to budget. The easiest one, and Brian can chime in as well, the easiest option is the third floor. It's much cheaper to go up than to go out. Uh, I don't believe that has a, have you seen any? So like, we, like, like the most obvious one hasn't been explored. And I guess that would be the question. Once we see that, then you might find, you might actually be able to build a bigger building because you've done it in a cheaper fashion than to go out this direction, which requires additional foundations and excavation, those other work to go this direction. So, um, without, like, we're saying we should look at what that other option is and then make a choice. We're not telling you to cut anything, we're not telling you to pick the other one. But in the context of finite dollars and, and what others are doing, it would be worthy of exploring just to at least have the information.
Yeah.
Can I ask this, what feels like a silly question? So I'm hearing you saying, like, we think you should look at a third floor, right? That's what you're saying? And you're saying that that's been proposed to the architect? Does, did you know that?
Yes, and we've talked to the architect about doing that.
And does the building advisory committee know that? Okay, so that feels like a disconnect. Why is that?
It, it just, it has not come up in conversation at the building advisory regarding that. We've had those conversations with the architects at a project meeting. Uh, we've brought up questions about the cost of the project meetings as well, regarding, you know, lowering, and we have not received anything with any options or any needle of lowering any of the costs. We've discussed with them about the cost of the square footage as well.
That feels like something that should kind of flow through to the building, yes?
Yes. I, I, yes, I think that would be much appreciated.
We can talk about it at the next building meeting.
It will be then.
Have a discussion as a committee as well regarding that. We've been putting a lot of focus on the student enrollment because that was something that we were also tasked to look at. But we've been doing a lot of work around student enrollment and schedules and how to increase the student enrollment. So that way we can get more reimbursement back from, for the building.
While you're here, Mario, are there any other, is that what came to the conversation? And how they made their way through?
May I ask something to piggyback off of that?
Can I ask a question though? There's somebody else I want to ask to clarify because we're, we're saying some things and I'm getting info and I'm not, from one source to another. You just commented that we made this decision for February fifteenth, but items came in as late as last Friday. My understanding of why that happened is that we submitted, it wasn't reviewed right away, and there was confusion with the portal, which the portal was new and our OPM had difficulty getting everything in the portal. So then she had to resubmit and she had to download everything and put it through email to you. And I have that. So I just want to clarify certain things that are being said, like we knew stuff wasn't going in, but there was also concern with the portal, she couldn't get stuff uploaded to the portal. The person that was there to review it wasn't there, we didn't hear back until later, after, like later than the fifteenth, that something was not in and she had to resubmit. So it wasn't that something wasn't done on our end, it was confusion with the seminal process and portal, which is new. I just want to make sure we're putting this out there, because I feel like we're getting bagged a lot right now on things. And some of it might have been too, how things were submitted and use of a portal and not going in. And then communication came to us after the fifteenth about it, that it wasn't there, which we didn't know, it wasn't uploaded in there and it wasn't because it wasn't done. I, I just want to clarify that too.
Thank you, I was ignoring that part.
I did too, I was gonna let that one go. No, but I think that's valid. Is that your interpretation too of what happened, Mario?
That's what was explained to me, but it's not that we have.
No, and it's okay, and that sounds like an offline thing, but we want to make sure that we, we are greatly appreciative.
Comments being made in public. And then we find out, oh, you did things later. And that was not the case.
Yeah, so we, um, right, there's like thirteen applications came in on the fifteenth, so we don't open them all that day. It is true that it took a few days, though the expectation is things would, would be there. Right, I think one of the comments we've made is the price you're paying for your services, that we would expect everything to be complete.
But I don't think it wasn't complete, I think it was something with how it was uploaded.
I believe, I mean, it's, it's here, it's here now, we're gonna review it. And again, the goal is to get all the documents through the review, all the documents were not in. We are gonna review them, I know we're still waiting for the demographic study, but the comment, uh.
And that we knew when it comes to.
Sure, but to, to blame, you know, the reviewer perhaps is unfair when, when the expectation is you're paying one and a half million dollars to someone who should provide a complete application because the other vendors provide complete applications.
Going back to, thank you for that clarification. Going back to the part about, so, so it's clear that you, you, you think that we should go up instead of out. Even if we go up, we are still going to want to build a space that is larger than probably what would fit into your reimbursement algorithm, correct?
We don't know that.
Just because of the sheer number of students and what we're trying to put in, like that's not, like I hear what you're saying and I'm sure the building manager committee will review it, but we're still going to be asking to put in a space that's larger than knowingly than, than what we would get full reimbursement.
So right now, we would approve up to ninety-four thousand square feet. You're only asking for seventy-seven thousand. You're not close to, to the limit. So it's unclear what, what these spaces are that you're describing, but the idea is that we would want you to build at least ninety-four thousand. And if you want to go above that, that's fine. That, that's an example that others have done who've chosen to go above and beyond. You're going beneath and more expensive, which is the concern.
Yeah, so why in your letter when you replied to us about the, um, the inquiry that we've made about the demographic study, you wrote in your last paragraph, um, that the project was on track to potentially lose twenty-six million dollars in reimbursement based on the documents that were provided? Like, can you just give me some clarity on that? Cause I'm trying to understand, I understand like you have, like what, what you said thus far, but I'm just trying to understand kind of your perspective on how that is the case.
Yeah, so we sent a detailed review November, I think thirteenth, I mean, I can pull up the date, where we first flagged that, uh, with our feedback to stage two, that the project, based on the information that was submitted, was not going to substantiate over twenty-six million dollars the cost, which, which that was off the charts. Uh, since then, I believe with the discussions of moving students over, that, that number is, is closing. But it's closing only because of that move. It doesn't seem like anything has actually changed to, like we would want to see both to get, to get you over the edge. That does not seem like it's been the case, uh, over the last several months.
Sorry, I still don't understand. So let's try a different way. No, I just, I'm really, like I'm really trying to figure out what you want us to do. And so we have a building that is seventy, what, what did you say, seventy?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, and you would reimburse up to ninety-four. So we are smaller than that.
Yes.
You were recommending that we go up instead of out, and then you're recommending that we increase the enrollment, which we understand the.
So we sent pages.
How are we losing twenty-six million dollars?
Yeah, so we've sent pages of comments. So these are just an example here. There's pages of comments, there's been, I think, at least three meetings with the administration and the architects.
Yeah, I, I read the comments.
Sure, so, but, but some of it, like we don't see anyone else proposing a thousand a square foot. So I guess that would be the first, like, yes, like why are we seeing that? What, you know, again, we, and there's pages there. The, the twenty-six million was simply, it was the, the square foot number we approved times the kids that you're showing. Four hundred student middle schools stand alone, I, we haven't seen one in a while. So that may also be a bit of an outlier, the size of the previous version, though that has been since moved. I think you're gonna do five twenty-five now. Um, and the square feet per student that, that we approved. There's a, there's a high level formula and as well as a lot of backup. We sent several pages of comments with that and have made multiple, and I suppose we can follow up in writing with some other more details one, if that is of interest.
No, no, I just, that, okay, so you're concerned about the square foot, the square foot cost beyond just the enrollment piece? You think that our architects are giving us estimates that are not what you think they should be? That's, that's what I'm hearing.
They're higher than anyone else.
You think they're not doing a good job.
I'm saying, I can tell you that they're higher than every other district.
Yeah, okay.
Is it losing or is it not maximizing?
No, like, so it's way more, the costs that are being shown as, as the estimate are higher per square foot than everyone else by a wide margin.
Can I ask you too, if we went up, would we have to add more than the five twenty-five students? Like if we increase our square footage, is that gonna change the number you're, would you come back and be like, now you need six hundred students?
No, like the, again, that was a vehicle to help because part of our formula is number of kids times a square foot that the state approves, times square foot per student. One times one times one equals, so this is a way to help boost it, was, was a piece. But we, the expectation would be there would be other inputs coming to, to get us there. Only one input has occurred, which is just moving kids without changing anything else.
So getting the square footage higher would not affect, and the student count is what you're recommending?
Yeah, again, and there might be other, uh, it does, may not be a third, like it may be something else, but we have provided a lot of feedback and, uh, superintendent mentioned, a lot of that perhaps hasn't been, uh, reviewed or analyzed.
May I ask, um, I, I believe it was November sixteenth, the feedback that you provided, has there been any other, and that was a, I know, like a packet of stuff. Has there been any other, uh, stuff since then? Or like, in other words, these notes that you're, and this feedback that you're providing? Or was that just kind of, you wait until, you know, the initial stage two application and then you gave us feedback and now the next time around will be like mid-May or?
Yeah, so we've, um, that's a great question. So we received the original stage two September fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. We did our review and I think we've met, uh, at least three times, two or three times with the district that provided the feedback. The stage two came in again this February. Uh, again, we received many applications, so by the time we checked, there were a few things that came in, they're here. And you will be soon getting another pages of, of feedback again on, based on the new materials. It's quite possible that many of the items that we asked for the first time have been addressed, but the most pressing one was on the, the square foot of that one particular building. We didn't have many concerns with your other projects.
And, and approximately, I, I know that you have till May, but do you think we'll get that information?
Oh, yeah.
Feedback prior to?
The, typically we will, you'll get it at the end of this month and we usually give about three weeks for you to respond. We'll review and then we'll meet and let you know, hey, either we can advance you and this will happen, or we can keep waiting and this, but you will have that choice probably in April, at the end of April.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, Mario, I just wanted to clarify was, um, you were talking about our, uh, vendor scope of work and like the amount that we were paying for the district. And when we were originally presented with, starting this process, and we were presented with an RFP process, not an RFQ process. So we were presented with companies giving us proposals without the financials connected to that. And so when we made the decision of which companies to go for, et cetera, like we did not have that financial information, um, which was presented to us as the way that it works. And so I guess my question to you as like kind of an expert in this area is, was that the way that that process should have gone? And how would we know in that process that a company would cost more than another company would cost? As that was not, it was an RFP process, not an RFQ process?
Yeah, so this, the, that part is. Yeah, so I will say for, uh, stage one and two, typically, most communities will go by price on that piece as opposed to qualifications. Step one is to get approved, step two is then to begin design. Some communities will switch at that point between stage two and three, and then they will do an RFQ process on, on that and then negotiate fees. The comments that we made, so just, and again, we have access to see what others are paying. And I don't have like your full amount yet. I'm assuming it's, it's over the number that it was quoted in that letter. I, I think it's over one and a half million now here, but it's, um, you know, several times higher than, than, for example, South Kingston is one, or Cherahoe, who was looking to do it for a third of the price. The only other example that I have of what you're paying would be Johnston, but they were able to, I don't know what fee you have negotiated for stage three. They actually got a really good deal at six percent for their stage three. I don't know if yours is close to that or not. But, um, like in their case, it made sense to front load some of those costs because it reduced the overall cost for the stage three. I haven't seen your contract, I don't know what you're paying for stage three. But I will say that for a while now, we have, we have, um, that's been eye opening, the price that has been paid for this. I can, if I can be honest.
So the, and this is not, Dr. Do was not here at that time. The administration that presented that to us as the correct choice of the way to proceed in this process perhaps misinformed us, is that what you're saying?
I can say.
Cause how do we know? Like we wouldn't know?
Yeah, no, and, um, yeah, unless you ask other peers or you could ask, we have districts who ask us, hey, how much does this seem right? And we can say, yeah, that seems like that's what, uh, Unzaket's paying or John, like we can, we can do that, some of that. But yeah, perhaps you wouldn't have known if some other procurement process occurred years ago and you were given this information and now you're paying for it, um, you may not have known then.
And there's, other than renegotiating or re-going out for stage three, there's nothing we can do about that going backwards?
No, I think, I think you've already paid it out, so it's not like you, I mean, that's sunk cost.
So you were just noting it for Hunzies?
Well, the, if I can comment, so it was odd, the amount of discussion on the demographic enrollment because it was surprising that it wasn't included in the fee. Like that was the purpose of making that comment, that everyone else, including vendors who charge a quarter of the price, do that study with no fanfare. And the amount of questions and emails that we received on that was surprising.
Okay, that's valid, thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we will go back up to special reports. And so any, um, notes or questions on the homeschool report by grade or the personnel actions?
I had a question on the, the homeschool. It looks like there was like a spike in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And I'm just wondering if you have any idea what that spike was for. Like there was a spike in twenty, twenty-one, which was COVID, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, maybe twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-five are all between like ninety-five and ninety-nine. Twenty-two, twenty-four was like a hundred and thirty-five, so it's definitely a spike. I don't know the answer now, but if you could just.
An observation slash question?
Yes.
Something, Sid, I just.
The year twenty, like last year, twenty-three, twenty-four was higher than any year, it was even higher than the COVID year. And I'm just wondering why.
I will look at that and see.
Okay.
I, I think we discussed that last, I think there was a conversation last time too, that the high, was the high school numbers that increased, because we had questioned that as well.
Yeah, and I remember that, but like it hasn't continued, like it's gone back down to the other, the pre-levels.
Okay, any other questions regarding the reports?
Are we good?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, we can, if we can just get some follow-up on that, that would be great, thank you. Moving on to the advisory reports, uh, the first one is school redistricting, start time and transportation advisory committee. So this is a report out of what happened at that meeting, Dr. Do.
So at the last redistricting meeting, um, we first, you know, we, we started off commenting on the feedback that we were receiving from, uh, the community through some of the emails, um, that we received. We just kind of like, you know, taking that feedback, want to listen to what, what people are saying regarding, um, concerns that are there with having children, having to, uh, move schools from where they are to another school, impact of that on academics and social, emotional needs. We also talked about certain neighborhoods and why we're looking at different neighborhoods for that move. I can get into detail now, I mean, we talked about it at that meeting. I don't know how far you want me to get into detail of what we discussed at that meeting. We talked about the impact on Title I. We talked about the possible use of modulators, that, um, that's something I, I put in a request to find out what the cost would be for modulators. It's something that's not in the budget for next year, so we'd also have to consider that if that is the option that we go with. When we, but I did put in a request, there's a lot to consider, there's different type of modulars. You know, they want, it was, you know, you're putting a foundation in, you're putting out the grass and all that, all needs to get evaluated. We discussed that, um, piece. And, um, I also brought up concerns, I'm gonna mention it, so now we have people here, when we have staff, when we have staff here. I brought up concerns about comments that we need. I'm gonna raise it again because. I brought up concerns about comments that are being made. I'm going to raise it again because some comments are brought up again too about Quinessa. We need to have a better understanding of the schools and not make judgments just based on test scores or ratings or reports, without going into a school and going into that community and learning about that community. Because what's happening is I'm also getting comments from families that are there, that are upset with the comments that are being made about their school. And we saw tonight that we had a teacher, you know, and others share. Quinessa, just like any other school, is a great community. And if we're just going to start looking at test scores, we need to dig deeper and learn more about what those test scores and those test scores come. Because we have excellent teachers, and I'm not just saying it because the teachers are here, but they need to hear that. Because they are concerned with everything that's happening. We have excellent teachers and staff and a principal at that school. That's creating a very caring environment. And anyone that goes in there knows that it's an extremely welcoming school. And if we look also at that school and look at what that school has gone through this past year of losing staff, and how the staff came together, how the students and the families came together, speaks a lot about that school. A lot more than what a rating says or a test score says. And these comments need to stop regarding that. I know there's concern about moving. I would be concerned as well if I was a parent and it was my child moving. And I put that on in these, thinking about this in these conversations and these discussions, because it's important, there's an impact there. We don't want to just pick a neighborhood. You know, we're not moving Bissell Cove, we're not moving kids that are in walking distance. You know, we started looking at a map. That turned into, that's what they're doing. And that ran. So, you know, we're not looking to move people that are in walking distance from school and put them on a bus and move them. Yes, we are looking at neighborhoods that are off Randall, Kentucky, that are near other neighborhoods that go to Fish and Co. You know, that is what, you know, we're going to be looking at everything. Maybe we don't do anything for next year, because we did look at the last one, of looking at what would happen if we just leave everyone where they are, right? Then we look at what would it look like if we do shift some, a few neighborhoods from Hamilton to Fish and Co, right? It does create an impact where you look at the numbers and Fish and Co is over in some. And I, I thought I was clear at the meeting and talking about how we resolve that, right? Looking at it, we do need to add a K classroom at Fish and Co. I shared out that, you know, currently Stony Lane has five Ks. I don't believe they're going to have five Ks. They had five kindergartens there because we needed to because of the population. Looking at the current data that we have, and I keep saying this, the data we're using is live. We have enrollment data that's coming in that changes what we have, because we put that in there so we know, right? So as registrations come in, we put that in. It's not just registrations for kindergarten. It's registrations for first, second, third, and fourth and fifth grades. That changes the numbers as well when we receive those registrations. So it's not simple just to look and say, well, that number was you, it could change. The numbers will change slightly based on registrations. When we looked at it last week, we had a hundred and ninety-eight students registered in kindergarten. Potentially, we're looking at a max of two hundred and sixty-six, so we don't have that. So that number is going to change too, depending on where the registrations come from, depending on the neighborhoods of where they live. So we'll see that. We'll see if those numbers grow. And I said at the last meeting, I thanked the families in Hamilton, they cut out right away and they registered. We have the highest registration rate in Hamilton, which is helping us. Because if we get those registrations in, we know now what kids we have, you know, the kids that are going to be going to the schools that help us in this process. So so we're looking at everything. Yes, we're going to, we're not going to rush in and make a decision. But we are considering transportation routes, monetizing children will be on a bus from where they're coming from. We're looking at current neighborhoods of what schools, neighborhoods go to. We are looking at developments in all of our projections. We have the development data. We've been working closely with the town, the town planner, and what you know as far as developments that are here. They gave the same information to Proper, who's doing the updated demographics for us. All of that is being accounted for. We've actually, Transportation Supervisors having personal conversations with one of the, I believe it is an engineer that's working at Reynolds Farm on housing development. So we know kind of timeline of the homes that are being built. They talk about bus stops, where the bus stops need to be in the neighborhood. So there's communication between the school department and even the builders as that is happening. We don't want to disrupt, you know, comes about diversity and, you know, where diversity is, right? We want diversity in all of our schools if we can do that. And it's not like we picked one neighborhood because we wanted to move the diversity out of Fish and Co and over to Quinessa. That that wasn't the reason. But again, that's a consideration that people are bringing up, right? I mean, when I was at Fish and Co the other day, it's a very diverse school. They are absolutely correct about that. Fish and Co is a very diverse school. It would be great if we had that in all our schools across the town. But we know just based on population where people are living, we don't have that in every single school. And that is something to consider in the work that we're doing. We've looked at a school placement A, which is just leaving everyone where they are. I don't want to say right now what we're going to bring forward to you, but that could be. That we just put everyone back at their schools and leave it the way it is and work through this. You know, when we get the new demographic study and look at that. Or maybe we do need to make a slight shift. There've been recommendations about, can we send our students to Jamestown? Can we tuition with Jamestown? You know, we can have that conversation, you know, we started, I mean, when I was recently, you know, when I was leaving Jamestown to come here, in Jamestown, we were wondering, should we do something like that? But just, there's a lot of unknowing of administration and what was happening at the time a few years ago, so that conversation didn't happen. And maybe that is something that we approach. You know, we talked about having modulators. Someone even mentioned, can you reopen Davisville as a school? Davisville Elementary was a K-five school. Can you do pre-K to five? I think, just kind of thinking that, that would be a bigger disruption, because now you're opening a whole new elementary school. So that's a bigger shift that would happen with neighborhoods. It's still, I think it still would impact Southern End of Town as well within that shift because of space wise and what we need to do. So we are looking, you know, thinking that, considering, you know, what people are bringing forward as, you know, could that be a possibility? And everything's up on the website, so, you know, maybe what we'll do is we'll put something on the, into the homepage to make it easier to find. I'm hearing that it's difficult to find the information. But it is under, you have to go to the school committee, you have to go to our website, go to school committee, go to advisory committees, then redistrict. So there's a lot of clicks. So that's something that we can do and try to make more upfront, so it's easier for people to find. But as we, you know, have a presentation or daily, you know, we're putting that up on there. Heard tonight, people would love to know what the involuntary and the voluntary data. I'll put that out there. You know, we have no problem sharing that information if people are asking about that. You know, we have that information. It's numbers we consider. I discussed it at the last meeting about how many transfers we had to make. So we, I can put a chart together and share that and put that on there so people see it. I wrote that down as something to do. Now, we do want to be transparent. But also too, some of that data, that data is also confidential. And you start thinking about special education programs and you start thinking about specifics of students. And you, you look and you wonder why numbers look different from school to school or grade to grade. You know, some of that, members of the community respectfully won't have, because it's confidential data that we have. And they have to trust us that we know that information about students and why they might have to move. You know, a family might have multiple siblings and one sibling has to go to school A, because that's where the special education program is. And we try to accommodate for that family, so the rest of the elementary siblings go to that school too. So that creates a shift in numbers from one school to another that no one else knew was, but we know, that that's kind of like why that's happening. At least try to be careful because some of that, with that information being confidential, not specifically giving student data right, but just knowing, okay, how many specialized programs are in the school which I have provided. So that's, you know, what we're looking at doing. And, you know, we have another meeting coming up, you know, next week, you know, for us to kind of sit, you know, again, go through and discuss like, you know, what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions regarding the advisory committee report out?
Well, Megan, do you have anything to share as the other co-chair?
Do you want to tell about the motion that was made and passed? Because I think that might be important, just.
Sure, do you want to?
Sure, so, so I, I did make a motion that didn't seem to be very well received, that we hold off and slow down and not necessarily, I had spoken to Dr. Duvall to just really say, what if we did nothing? What if we did nothing this coming September? Because naturally, if it was going to be a disaster, then I wouldn't want to put forth a motion that was going to cause more harm than good. And I just asked that we maybe slow this down and not do anything for September. And the committee seemed as a whole, somebody else made a motion, so I rescinded mine, because it just seemed like the feedback during my, during the discussion of my motion was, no, we want to keep going. And we were tasked with this job and we want to see what we can do. I think it might have been almost missed, and I'm not speaking for them, but I'm wondering if maybe if my motion came across as giving up? Like, okay, let's just stop what we're doing. And I give them a lot of credit, the committee, for wanting to continue forward and see what we could work out. So the other motion that was made was to continue on and to see what the advisory committee, what recommendations they could potentially come up with. So that's, that's what was made, that's the motion that was passed. And that's what the advisory committee is going to do, is continue to work towards potential options or recommendations to bring back to the school committee.
But ultimately, one of the recommendations could be what you said, to not do anything for September, right?
Right, and it could be.
Just to, just for clarification sake, this is just a report out from the advisory committee. So we can't talk about anything in this agenda item that was not said at the advisory committee. So what Dr. Duvall's shared so far is wonderful, what Megan just shared is fine, but we can't, this is an under unfinished business. So we can't go further for that at this point, although we most certainly will get an update, we'll have it on as a business item at our next meeting. Any other questions regarding the report out? Great, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the building advisory committee report out.
Why don't I just, I know you're the chair, so I didn't know if you wanted to report out on that?
No, well, I mean, we, we met, and I think the big thing that we talked about was doing the RFP process for the next stage, because our contracts that we have with our current vendors are only to the end of stage two. So we have to start the process to find, you know, whatever the vendor is going to be for the rest of the project.
Just to clarify that which vendors, because we have three vendors. So the, our owner, project manager, contract is up.
And the CIP.
And the architectural firm for the CIP, but not the architecture for the new middle school. That was approved from beginning of stage one through completion of opening the building. So we're not looking for a new architect for the middle school. So want to?
Right, no, thank you. So I mean, that was the, I think that was the biggest part of the meeting where we talked about that. I don't know if.
The PLA, do you want to talk about the PLA, like how we're going to have a?
Oh, we are going to have a presentation from, and invite someone from, I don't know the, I don't know.
The Rollout and the Rollers Association.
Yeah, Rollout and the Rollers Association to come in and talk about a PLA agreement. And see, and weigh the cost benefits of that to see if it's, would be cost effective for our particular project. And see if that's something we want to approach. The town has, you know, the town manager shared that they've dealt with this in the past. Not just in the recent past, but in the, in the distant past, they've gone through this. And just to, I guess, you know, make sure that we're covering all the bases, we want to see if that's something that we want to look at and go into as well. So that was, I think that was the three biggest items at the last meeting. Bill, please feel free to share.
Yeah, no, so just, you know, with the RFQ, so there will be a RFP, which is a request for proposals, which includes pricing. And that's the proper route to go for the OPM, right? That'll go out. We are looking to post that April ninth. So we asked for feedback, received it, still going through, kind of putting all that in there. Probably tomorrow, I'll be sending it up to you to review, both RFP for the OPM and the RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for the architecture for the capital approval plans. And then we'll bring it to the April eighth meeting, the school committee to approve, and then April ninth, we post it. And then, I'm sorry, I don't have the timeline in my head, but somewhere around beginning of May, everything will be due. It does, because these, the OPM and the architecture would be paid through the bond, it does need to go to town council for approval as well. Because now we're hitting that point where it'll be using bond money, money. So anything we're using for bond has to be approved by the, any, any of those bids have to be approved by the school committee and the town council. So we set the timeline up to meet those deadlines, and that will go out. The RFP and RFQ both have criteria in there of how we will make decisions, so there's this criteria that we will follow. The bids will be opened, they will come to the building advisory committee to review. The building advisory committee will make the recommendations by using the criteria through the RFP for the OPM and the criteria for the RFQ through the, for the architecture. Both would then be forwarded to town, for school committee, town council for approval. Then, once the RFQ, once we have a qualified vendor through the RFQ, we then negotiate the price. If we're happy with the price, we go back out. I'm not sure that happened at this time, or is not here. But that is what will happen in the process, and that is in the RFQ.
Anything else from the building advisory committee for a report out? Okay, moving on to policy, Jen?
The policy advisory committee met last night, March seventeenth. We can, continued our review of the policies relating to assigning students to schools, attendance boundaries, registration and request for reassignment. We began going through these in the summer, and our goal in updating these policies is to provide additional information and transparency on these processes. We've consolidated five policies down to two, so that everything pertaining to each subject can be found in one spot. At our next meeting, we expect to review the GCB and related policies and continue to work through the outstanding policies on our agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled for March thirty-first at four thirty P M.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the policy advisory committee's report out? Okay, here, now we move on to unfinished business. The first item is the school committee meeting dates. I would like to make a recommendation that we make a motion to move the other calendar up as well, so that we can look at both the school calendar and the school committee meetings kind of back to back, yeah. All those in favor of moving that item up and talking about them in combination is kind of what I was saying. Yep, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And so you have two documents in front of you. They're also attached to the agenda. And so one is the, I asked for the school, our proposed school calendar for next year. I also asked for rides, which is their recommended school calendar. It's something we always consider when making these decisions. And then we also had, the school committee ones are attached. And so wanted to get first consideration kind of on the school calendar. We definitely believe in practice, try to look at it at two different meetings, so that we can get any feedback from the community?
The school community.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so that we're not, I'm not seeking approval on this tonight, just beginning the conversation, putting it out there for teachers, community members, et cetera, to see it. And then having it on for the April eighth agenda again for possible approval. We like to give some time for folks to, to take a look at it. So any initial thoughts or questions regarding the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar?
No, but I did have a question slash comment still on our school committee days.
Yeah, we can talk about that as well.
So we had talked at the last meeting about potentially adding that third date in February as a TBD, because we always seem to end up scheduling one. And then the other thing that I noticed now that we have the tentative school committee, I mean, school calendar dates, is that the January sixth school committee meeting is the first Tuesday back from break. And I think we had talked, yes, that's bad, yes. And so is the April twenty-eighth meeting, that's the first meeting back from break.
Yeah, so we need to look and readjust those.
Yeah.
All right, so just to make a note, so on the school committee calendar, the way that our calendar falls, it would have us meeting on January fifth, you said, and that is the first day back from break, which we know is not productive for the administration or the school committee. And then that same issue on April twenty-seventh?
Uh, no, it's the sixth and twenty-eighth, yes.
The sixth and the twenty-eighth, excuse me. This calendar has Mondays instead of Sundays.
Yeah, it's weird.
Not gonna lie, that's why. Okay, April twenty-seventh was the other, twenty-eighth was the other, I'm sorry.
Six and twenty, January sixth and April twenty-eighth, yes.
So make that note.
I have a question about that Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before. I know that you all changed that last year, that it was not off this time. I was just curious, what was the, the overall feedback? Because I, I kind of heard both sides from people.
So it's, so when we create the calendar, we keep in mind when we're getting out of school. And we keep in mind looking at where that last school may be and having to consider possible snow days as well. We're also considering the Juneteenth, because if you have to have school, no school, come back, we're also trying to consider that, so we're out prior to the Juneteenth. So we're kind of using that as our deadline. Right now, the seventeenth is our last day of school, it gives us one day for a possible snow day. Everybody loves that Wednesday off, not gonna lie, everybody does. That is a hard decision, because what happens too, families might travel, other things might happen. For a few years, school districts were giving the Wednesday, not every school district. You know, we looked at other calendars, I thought others, some are, some aren't doing that. We chose not to, so that way we can get out earlier in June and give us some time with possible, additional days of snow, weather, whatever that means.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was just curious.
That's the reasoning behind it.
Right, I was just wondering like how it went last year.
It, it didn't, I mean, I'll be perfectly honest, it didn't go well, like attendance wise. No, you know, like I think, and I think we knew that, and so it's that really weird balance of, do we give that day off officially, knowing that then we would be, we had no wiggle room with the end of, Juneteenth falling at the end of the week too. So we weren't just talking about bringing students back, we were talking about bringing them back on that following Monday, which would be the same case here. And so I think, you know, school was in session, folks, some folks went, some folks didn't go. But alternatively, if we gave the twenty-sixth, I would recommend to us, like considering, well, what else might we change or shift? Because I do think, like, history shows that we usually have at least one school day, snow day-ish, like a season at this point. And so realistically, we could, we should at least, I think, plan on that, and if not, there could be more. And so just thinking about if we do the twenty-sixth, then what happens?
Yeah, that's fine, I just, I was just curious, I really don't have an opinion on one way or another, so.
Other thoughts, questions, considerations for the calendar? James Dowd, are you up with your calendar? Waiting for us?
Yeah, we're waiting for you guys. We're the second and fourth for meetings.
Yep. You do the second and fourth for your meetings. And then?
Can we change the dates we were talking about on our calendar and approve it tonight? Because I know we're a little behind on getting that approved.
For the school committee one?
Yes. Like, can we make a motion to change the two dates and add one, like we discussed?
We could.
I just know that I feel like we're on like the crunch of approving that.
Yep, I don't know. We definitely could, and then we can always amend it if we want to. So if folks want to propose alternative dates for the January sixth, the April twenty-eighth, and then also that, the additional date in February, we absolutely could make a motion to change those and approve it this evening.
Do we have a hard copy of that or just the square?
I think it's just, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't.
It's just being.
So, yeah, we could get it quickly printed, probably.
No, 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 I can absolutely, you know, I'd be able to print you things, I can absolutely access it online.
I had asked for the school calendars to be printed, which is, was what we achieved.
I do not want a copy, I do not.
I do, I do, I want. He, I do want, I want. Yeah, it helps me to have all three out.
Well, because I'm thinking we could just do, could we do the thirteenth instead of the sixth, like just move it to the following?
We also have to think about when Andrew is available.
I can't do the second Tuesday, maybe I'll have someone else, the second and fourth Tuesdays, I can't do.
So if we did the...
Or were you thinking just moving later that week?
Well, that's my, that's my question, like, is later in the week or is that whole week then no good for the administration?
I mean, I, I will defer, when Kate comes back, we can talk about it. But I feel like what happens is if we have a meeting that Monday or Tuesday, then we have to post the agenda the, the week prior because of the, the rule about how often it needs to be posted.
Right.
And so if we were going to go that week, like you'd assume that like the administration would come back that Monday, the agenda, like, at earliest, you would post it on Tuesday, that's ambitious. And so the earliest that meeting would be is that Thursday. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so like the eighth.
Yep.
Yeah, which is kind of crunching the time.
Ken, the question was, thank you for this. With the concept of not meeting on the sixth because it's right after break, like is that whole week out for, from the administration's perspective? Or could it be a Thursday meeting?
I would say I think it goes back and depends when we're creating the agenda for that meeting, so that we have enough time to put the attachment together. If we're, if we're gonna, kind of like, if we have break, we come back, and that Monday, we create the agenda, it's going to be very tight to have a turnaround to get anything out. Because for a policy, we have to have it, so if we dig up a policy, right, we have to have that agenda seven, created seven days prior to the meeting. Which means that would happen over break, there's a chance that staff won't be here.
Yep. Yeah, and that's, that's the reality.
Probably could do it prior, right? So if we create the agenda prior to going out on break, then the agenda's created, and then we can look what those attachments may need to be. And those attachments need to be provided by that Monday, which again, might be tough because people aren't here.
That means you're creating the agenda on December twenty-third, and I just don't see it being realistic.
Well, or even before that, so I'm just thinking.
I don't see it being realistic.
My suggestion would move it to the thirteenth. In order for us to get that.
So thirteen pushes it to?
Well, then Andrew can't be.
No district attorney, yeah.
Maybe someone from my office, but that's, that's just a, like, my own office.
We obviously this year has made, have made that choice, like knowingly, and so it's kind of that balance of, like, like, do we move it to the thirteenth and then have back-to-back weeks? So you'd be like the thirteenth and the twentieth?
Well, the twentieth is a bunch of workshops, so we have, like, we just have, we really have to get a meeting in before that.
We would need it anyway.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, we definitely want a meeting before that.
I say just move it to the thirteenth.
Yeah.
I, I kind of think that's our only option unless we, if we do different days of the week, then we're running into all sorts of other people's meetings and advisory committees and.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I think we do the thirteenth.
Well, we haven't even created that yet, so.
Sorry.
We haven't even created that.
Yeah, these are so far.
Right, I think I'm.
Well, I'm thinking like town council, I mean, just anything that we can anticipate.
Mondays are, Mondays are town council, every other Monday.
Oh, my gosh, let's just do the thirteenth.
And so.
Yeah, I see, just do the thirteenth. Because I think there's enough time for everyone to come back and get the package.
Is that a town, we don't have the town council, I'm just, town council?
I think we do the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll change the sixth to the thirteenth.
Yep.
And then are we following that same model for?
April twenty-eighth.
April? That makes us go, we wouldn't have a meeting the fourteenth, the twenty-first, or the twenty, we would go three weeks without a school committee meeting.
Right, aren't we doing that now?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's the same reason, hopefully.
That's, that's what I was just going to ask.
I mean, the only thing that's okay with that is, it's kind of at the end of budget, you know what I mean, like the?
Where we're at, no, we're not as much.
So you're saying you would just take out the twenty-eighth?
Hold on, so we could go?
Do the thirty-first of March. Wait, no, that actually, no, hold on.
Oh, you're right, the seventeenth.
No, that doesn't make sense. How do we decide that? That's not helpful.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Why couldn't the first make sense? I don't know why.
Would that help us?
Because, you know why, because there's five weeks in March, that's a weird.
If we did March thirty-first.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that totally makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, we follow the early meeting.
So we'll get two meetings, they're just going to be at the front.
Yeah. Better than that, right after.
Right.
We don't want to go the opposite direction and move?
We really, if we go the twenty-eighth, is this?
I don't know, so maybe the, yeah, that's the only choice, yeah, so we're going to add the thirty-first, so what I'm.
Yeah, I think the thirty-first.
Yes.
Kind of an extra little week there.
And then we're canceling the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Yep. And then I agree with Jen, I think we should just add, because couldn't we add one in February and then we had to, we could also pull it out if we didn't need it, so at least we're prepared for it.
But it would be easier to add it now than try to like frantically add it on February.
When was the, when was the budget due to the town this year?
February twenty-fourth.
So if we go off that, we would imagine that they would present it on February twenty-third, right? Like, if they're following their similar?
No, because we had our meeting on the twenty-third this year.
Yeah, but we relate it.
Oh, that was their meeting.
We relate, it was not good. I'm trying to prevent the bad. And so the problem is, is we run into February break, and that's where the, the town schedule and our fourth meeting in February is extremely tricky.
So we should either schedule one for the twelfth or the thirteenth, if we're not going to schedule one after the break.
It would be the twelfth. Because the fourteen, that Friday before break sounds like a horrific idea for all involved.
I was just trying to.
Yeah, that's true.
No, I would not on Friday, the thirteenth.
Friday the thirteenth.
That's true, that's right, I see.
I will not be here. I've got, I don't know why, but I will not attend.
Are we saying February twelve is only if needed?
If needed, yes.
If needed, so we'll put that on.
You can even write it on there.
Yeah, you can even write, like.
And then you're, it's in your control if we need it or not. Yeah, okay, so we're going to add February twelfth if, with the notation of if needed.
Yeah, like, yeah.
And then that would allow us to hopefully?
And I would even put like budget approval if needed or something like that.
Yeah, that would allow us to hopefully approve that, the budget, no later than February twelfth. Then we go into break, and then the town council would have it for the twenty-third, which would be likely their meeting.
And so our first presentation of the budget will be on January twentieth. To the school committee.
Yeah, I think what we did last, which is I, that's a budget workshop.
So we have the twenty, one, two, three, four, essentially we have four meetings to do the budget.
I think.
I think you gave us something like high level.
We did high level on the third, January thirteenth last year, like we, you kind of gave like some preliminary, and then we did the workshop. So it would be that first meeting in January. Just not any details or specifics, but that, I think that worked well to kind of set the vibe.
Should we, should we?
Yeah, I think we should just put it on there so we'll know that.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, we'll forget.
It was basically whatever you did to the town in December.
And that way everybody knows what's happening.
And then if the school committee, Stephanie, if you could just follow up with the town, I don't know if Jeanette would have that joint budget date yet, if the town council, you know, like they, I have a feeling she might know. So if we can just grab that from her, I'm fine approving it without that in here, but.
So.
Isn't there also usually the, would we do the joint meeting with the town? Should we list the joint meeting with the town that we have for the?
Yes, the legislative one.
Yeah, I feel like we should list that as well.
That was in January.
So they have to, it's, it's their first meeting in January usually, right?
Yep.
Which is silly, but.
And April seventh is getting moved to the fourteenth?
April, I'll, I'll review, but April? No.
No, keeping, keeping, sorry.
April seventh is staying and the twenty-eighth.
Twenty eighth going March thirty.
Yeah.
This year was January thirteenth.
Want me to add to them?
For the town, yeah.
I'm just, so I'm looking to see, do they have their?
Let's list it as January twelfth.
Yeah, because I'm thinking they're not having it January thirteenth.
Yes. All right, well, tentatively listed as January twelfth, joint meeting with town council for legislative priorities, just for transparency's sake, I think that's helpful to have it noted. And then we can always change it if the town tells us different. Okay, anything else on the school committee calendar?
No.
No.
What was the date we decided?
Okay, so to recap, we are going to change January sixth to be the thirteenth, correct? We are going to add above that the January twelfth date, noting it as the joint town council meeting for legislative priorities.
Be the January thirteenth?
No, this is going to be January twelfth at Monday.
Oh.
Yep, so we, the, they, the town council usually does it at their meeting, although we could propose to do it at ours. And so that would be that January twelfth date, and then we would meet the next day on the thirteenth. The next change is adding a meeting if needed on February twelfth. Additionally, on that January thirteenth meeting, we are going to note the first kind of budget presentation for, right? Okay, and then we are adding March thirty-first as a business meeting. And we are deleting April twenty-eighth. Did I follow our journey correctly?
Did you say February twelfth budget approval if needed?
Yeah.
I did say that.
Yep.
Yep, I think that's good.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve the, I think, some school committee meetings?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that calendar with those, revision as noted.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then for school calendar, any other notes or consideration that we want the administration to look at before we see it at our next meeting?
I just want to ask a question because I had some high school administrators approach me and ask, and people may crucify me for this, but don't shoot me.
And you told them to go talk to the administration?
Well, I, I said I would ask the question, do any districts in Rhode Island start before Labor Day?
So.
Yes.
Yes, there have been districts that do, it's not, it's not normal.
I, I understand.
Very much the exception rather than the rule, but.
Coventry.
And oftentimes, it's dependent on when Labor Day falls. Certain years lend itself more to that than others, but typically, it's not the case.
And just, yes, it's a valid, it's a valid question, and just to note too, like, are?
We needed some extra days to get away from Juneteenth and make sure that we have the leeway there at the end.
Yep, that's a good consideration.
Just a question.
Any other questions from the committee at this point?
No.
All right, we'll see it again at our next meeting. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, we have the, can we get a motion for item C?
The DEI advisory committee request that we discuss.
Give it a second.
Second.
I believe that we had cut in an update on this at the last meeting?
No, we didn't, we tabled it at the last.
Got it, yeah, do it, yeah. Okay, so, actually, do you have an update regarding the advisory committee's request for, and then again, just to clarify, this is this fiscal year budget, not February twenty-sixth?
So what, talk with Leslie, we will move, shift, look at like funding that we have, make some shifts, make a mod of somewhere, you know, super tenants budget, school committee budget, where that may be to make shifts for that three thousand dollars for the use of, specifically to support the equity vision statement and promoting that throughout the district.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Do you have anything to add or?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, it's an important initiative. I think the idea that we discussed in the DEI committee has always been about student experience and student belonging. And, and, and we certainly have needs in that area. We certainly have data that would support that our students, often within some of our more marginalized communities, who don't feel that sense of belonging compared to other students. And it's important that we are taking note of that and taking action to, to improve in that area. There's a lot of discussion and debate about, about how we should go about doing that, and I think that's good, about what we can do to be, to be better in that area. But I think that the process that we've discussed within the committee is, is important, and I think it's very relevant to a lot of what the discussion we're hearing presently.
Anything further on that?
Yeah, I have a question, could you let us know when you figure out what you call a line it's coming from?
I will. I'll have it for the next meeting, Leslie, tomorrow.
And I was just, do, do you, do you guys have a, are you going to put a marketing plan together or around it, or like how, or is it already all set?
No, it's not all set, we were waiting, we'll have further discussions about it in the advisory committee.
Okay, because I was even thinking, like, I know it's like our promotional video, like, I know there's a parent that's in the film industry, like, I feel like it'd be good to even like try to get community involved and helping, like, I always have, as a mom, as a graphic designer, she does a lot of graphic design, so I think that might even be a good way to sort of like embrace the whole community around it too, like, not just.
We also have the high school, we can do this.
Yeah, like do stuff, so.
I was just curious if that was, because I thought that'd be kind of a good way.
Yeah, no, leaning heavily into the school and the students was, was part of the, was part of.
Yeah, because I feel like that'll kind of like make it even more community versus just, you know.
Yep, I hear, what I hear Sheri saying though is that there could be some opportunity to involve the community beyond the school, school lines, is the way that is a nice sentiment.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is part of the, the.
I'm very good at asking, yes.
Yeah, and also I think, you know, the DEI committee made recommendations, but ultimately, the administration is the one that will, will implement it.
Implement it, yeah.
And so, you know, Mr. Mendez and I, he's on that committee as well as Sally, and so, you know, it's not that the committee, the committee just makes those recommendations. And the recommendation was the funding, the administration now has the autonomy to take the recommendations and the ideas from the committee, but they will be ultimately responsible for, for that piece, so beyond our scope. All right, so this one? Okay, no?
No.
No, you do, no worries. Okay, anything else regarding that one? And so we'll get a follow up. I think just, Megan, is an email okay with the UCO line or do you want it on the next agenda? Yeah, I just want to know where the money's coming from. Yeah, all right, but the question just is, is it okay if Dr. Dewey emails us or do you want it on the next agenda? No, just an email, just so we're all aware.
Yep, do, you know, do you want to say, no, the next, next meeting, Leslie's going to kind of and providing other financial reports and reporting outs, that might be good for her then also at that point just to.
Yeah, in theory, though, the administration does move, you can move, one of the school committee for as much as you can.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, but, so however you want, Ken, it's my, I just wanted to clarify what, what Megan was looking for. All right, moving on to policies, Jen?
Okay, I will make a motion to discuss JIK Safe Schools policy.
Second.
So this is the second year of a new policy, which was listed as first date as policy KL. It's been updated to reflect a new policy number to place it more accurately within the policy manual. Rhode Island law requires schools to implement safety protocols to ensure that only authorized individuals are permitted access to non-public areas of the school. Accordingly, schools may prohibit all unauthorized visitors from entering non-public school areas except in the event of a genuine public safety emergency. This policy will formalize those protocols. I want to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, that there was no intention to exclude the SRO or any other KPD officer from access to the building or communication with students. This policy has been reviewed with the North Kingstown Police Department, and the revisions that you see today reflect their proposed edits. At this time, I am recommending approval.
Can I ask your question?
She just needs a motion.
Oh, sorry.
That, you're making a motion.
Sorry, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So we can't discuss?
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, actually, sorry, okay, got it. I, you're saying that the North Kingstown Police Department agreed, but I, that's not what I was getting from her response.
I personally had a conversation with Chief Urban, and the policy that you see in front of you is his proposal, is his proposed edits.
Okay, because I don't think that was the last email that we got, but that was not what I was understanding.
I personally had a conversation with Chief Urban.
Okay, so you're not concerned that I do feel like it's, and I'm not, I am very for this. I don't want to say that I'm not, but I do feel like it kind of doesn't. I don't feel confident that like the North Kingstown Police Department can come in if needed or if they're doing as they are now.
The policy that is attached to tonight's agenda is exactly how Chief Urban said it with his revised edits. He and I had a conversation. He is, this is exactly, he is comfortable with it. He and I had a conversation. It does not limit, Andrew and I have had a conversation about it. It does not preclude them from conversations. It does not preclude them from entering the building in the event of an emergency.
Sheri, is there any sentence that you're particularly concerned about?
No, I just think he had added originally some stuff more specific to it, you know, like actually calling out how SRAs are allowed to be in there.
No, that was, that was actually stuff that Andrew and I had put in.
Okay.
Are you referring to when he had attached something, Sheri?
Yes, I am, yeah.
So let's just check on that.
You know, like, you know, like under access to schools, it says A, and he had added, as a matter of course, North Kingstown police officers performing their official duties or school checks defined below are not considered unauthorized visitors.
That was language that Andrew and I had added, and Chief Urban did not feel that was necessary, so it came out based on his.
Okay.
I did email John today, Sheri, and he wrote me back. I just wrote and said, thank you for sharing your valuable insights and thoughts regarding the proposed policy. Perspective is greatly appreciated, and we recognize the time and effort you put into addressing this matter. And then I said I wanted to express my gratitude for collaborating with Ms. Lima, our policy chair, on the revised language. We will be discussing the points you raised at this evening's meeting and will carefully consider them. And then he replied and just said, always happy to provide feedback as requested. It's important that we work together to be efficient and collaborative to ensure that we produce the best possible outcome for the community. So I feel like.
Yeah, I think there was a bunch of emails that weren't all included on, which sometimes I know it's hard, that we can't reply all, so I was.
And just, just to further explain, the reason we have initially added the language because of the concerns raised in the last meeting to like specifically delineate. But Chief Urban felt that it was best to just specifically remove local law enforcement entirely from the policy, so that it specifically only covered federal law enforcement. So that's why any reference to local police came out.
Okay, because the last one I got was, yeah.
No, I understand, and, and we all can't be on the emails because of OMA, so.
Okay.
Can I raise a point of order?
Sure.
I'm kind of unclear with this process because it seems as if policy is being changed after policy stuff and before school committee. And while I respect that Chief Urban is Chief Urban, I, anybody could really write in and start to submit their recommendations for any policy if, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's a good question. Andrew, can you clarify the difference between what's possible between first read and second read? So it comes from the advisory committee, it makes, there's a recommendation to the school committee. We have first read and then the second read, so can you clarify that?
And then sometimes it goes back to the policy subcommittee, or sometimes there's, it depends, really the nature of the changes, if there's scrivener's changes, if they're like really substantive changes, it can go back to the policy. But as long as the school committee approves it on the second read, that's fine. But if you're more comfortable sending it back to the policy subcommittee for a thorough vetting of whatever those concerns are, that's fine too.
But I think that for the point of clarification, though, the school committee at any point in first read or second read can make edits. And then we can also, is it also okay that when we, what we heard during the first read gets incorporated into the second read?
Absolutely, as long, but it's going to be, it's going to be pointed out to the committee as it was, and then, like I said, the committee has the opportunity to say, either we're not happy with that, send it back to the policy subcommittee or make an addition.
Does that clarify? When does the, you, you're talking during a school committee meeting, so during the second read, we, we can say we want to send it back?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, if, if that's the thing.
But you're, you're not saying like via the emails, all the emails that were going back and forth?
No, 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 no.
Because we can't, because of.
No, you couldn't act as a body through those emails, but what I'm saying is as long as the policy that comes to you, you, you guys all get a chance to review the policy. And then you could either adopt it with the changes, you could send it back, you could say, we don't agree with Chief Urban, we think there should be more with Chief Urban.
You could make other changes here today too.
Yeah, in fact, I was going to, I was going to bring something else to your attention that was emailed to the superintendent today, just to make you aware.
Yeah, so just to be clear, so the reason that we all knew about it was because the emails were being shared with us, but that's, that's what would have to happen. It's not as if some, anybody off this, you know, from the, the public can just send me an email and say, throw this in there.
Well, to be very clear, yeah, I think if, if, it's the representation to the committee, right? So you want to be able to see what the document is, and I think it should be, hey, listen, since the first read, these changes were made either with, based on a conversation with a constituent or because of the policy subcommittee. Or these are my suggestions, then the committee has the right to say, we're fine with those, or you know what, we'd rather the subcommittee take another look at this and go back and do it.
Or dismiss it or whatever.
Correct.
Okay. And just to clarify, the, the, what we have proposed in front of us, although it did go through vetting and, and conversation with the chief, the, the actual red line changes are very minimal.
Yes.
Like, it's not like paragraphs got changed or anything, like when I'm looking through it, it's a lot of just clarification regarding federal and some, like inclusive language for his, hers, to theirs. So it's not like there's massive edits to, yeah, to the, the thing. Andrew, you said you had a fun phone in over there?
Fun, sort of, yeah. So Dr. Dewey shared with me a constituent's concern. It's on page three, paragraph F. Specifically the sentence, if the request is in person, the officer's ID should be photocopied and or scanned and kept on file.
Sorry, hold on, I don't see that as what you're saying.
Okay.
G, 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 not L.
Oh, G, I'm sorry, it's all merged, there's no, there's no space between the two paragraphs, I'm sorry.
Is it three, which one, three?
I have it on page three, packet page 38.
Sheri, how did you not catch, catch that spacing?
I know, because I.
All right, so item G?
Yep, so someone had pointed out to Dr. Dewey, there's a federal statute that prohibits the possession of a copy of a federal officer's ID.
We should not do that then.
Well, so, and just to be clear, I just did some Google research, which is never a great idea. There's a, there's a definition in the federal law that says possession, let me just read it to you, just so you can sort of decide on your own.
Where did that language come from?
I thought it came from the guidance from the AEG.
I think, I think, I think it did, but I'm not positive, like I said, I'm, I'm kind of scrambling here, but the, the definition I found was. With federal identification, possessed generally means to have dominion or control over an identification document or false identification document with the intent to defraud or use it unlawfully.
Okay, so along with.
But, but I do want to be clear, I'm not positive that that definition of possessed applies to this. It was pointed out, so I think you could do one of two things. If you want to be ultra conservative, you can just take that, that G out, because the paragraph right before it says, we're going to take your name, we're going to take your contact information. But I do want to be clear, I, I, I'm not sure it has to come out. It's, it's really up to you guys.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to take it out and that further investigation from Andrew, if, if it's deemed that it is part of the state. Where, you know, like if it, if we want to put it back in, we could always revisit it, but out of an abundance of caution, I would absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not a huge fan of the, the Google research.
Do you take all of G or just?
Yeah.
Just the last sentence.
The if part?
So it would just be just.
Yeah, if the request is in person, the officer's ID, that part should be deleted.
Yep.
If, and that's the way.
The if request part.
Yep.
Okay, so there are questions, comments?
Yes. Okay, so the first thing is, I'm still trying to be clear on the classification system. It's trying to be consistent with what we use, the NSBA NAPN classification system, the correct labeling of this policy. Because for them, the safe schools policy is under ADD. So I am, if this is going, to be honest with you, this seems to be more a policy about ICE. Because, which I can get to momentarily, if you actually go through the rest of the policy, we were kind of being redundant with things like access to schools. And we actually have another whole policy on access, student pickup at the end of the day if somebody doesn't show up for them. So starting right there, can we get a clarification on if we are going to be consistent, because we are with our other policies, on the classification system that we do use?
So just so I can, I can understand you clearly, like make sure I'm understanding clearly, so right now, it is listed as a J, correct? And that is under our section, which is header of students, correct?
Right.
And you're looking for it to be reclassified to be?
Well, if we're going to call it safe schools, it should to me be at the top, like, like they do in the other classification system. So they have it under ADD. We actually have a policy that's ADD1.
Yep.
But we don't have ADD.
I think that makes sense. I don't know why, but that feels, that, it's a brand, let me restate that.
I believe that's the threat, threat assessment?
Yep, yeah, that's a threat assessment, team one, yep. Jen, where did you get the?
At the last meeting, Megan writes the issue that it shouldn't be under K, that it should be under J, so I checked South Kingstown's and they had theirs under student, so I pulled ours under student.
Yeah, so, I mean, just again, I, I went through all of these policies again, so I just, I'm trying to just make us consistent. So if we're going to do the NSBI NAPN, if we're going to follow that, I think it's important maybe to keep it under what they have it under, which is safe schools policy. If we're calling it safe schools policy. It depends on how we want to label it.
So right now, it's currently called safe schools. And per, it sounds like your request would be moved from K to J, but I'm hearing you say that you want to move it from J to A?
Yes.
And based, that's based on what? Sorry, just don't follow.
Oh, just the, the classification system that we follow with our other policies, which is the NSBA NAPN.
Yep, you said they have their safe schools policy.
They're just under ADD, and again, we have an ADD1.
Yep. It's not like, well.
No, this is years.
I'm just saying, this is, we're trying, we're trying, okay.
No, I'm, we're trying to.
So that one, section A is founding, I don't care where it goes, let me actually be really clear about this. I, I, I hear what you're saying, but like I don't have a, a huge opinion on this one. Section A is foundation and basic commitments, and I don't know.
I'm just saying they call it safe schools.
Yep.
If we want to call it safe schools, then we should, I'm just trying to be consistent.
I don't have a problem changing it to ADD.
Great, okay, so we'll note that. Other questions?
Yeah, so if you look at paragraph, I'm sorry, let's see, well, I guess I'll skip around here. So if you look at the last, if you look at the last part of the policy, release of students, we actually have a policy on this. Although, to be honest with you, I think we need to fix that policy before we, or gut this paragraph four, but fix that policy. This policy is about, I don't think it's particular to just students whose, who might, whose parents might have issues with ICE. This, so the release of students really is in JLIB, and that is.
We just can't talk about that one right now.
Okay, so anyway, that policy covers this. I just, there's a lot of redundancy. That policy covers this, except that policy also should be fixed a little bit. So I think we should look into not being redundant.
I, I would disagree, and I think in this policy in particular, it's important to spell out that we are not going to, what we are going to do in the case of a parent being detained by ICE. So I would agree, I would say that we need to leave this in here, even if it is listed in another policy.
So this is specific, so then we're being very specific that this policy is just related to ICE. Is that what we're trying to say? Like, this does not cover the entire district, all the students. This is actually much, very, very specific to a specific, you know.
Subpopulation?
Subpopulation that might be at risk for this, you know, for, for ICE coming in.
This definitely covers issues pertaining to immigration enforcement, yes.
Right.
So is it possible, so I agree with Megan that I don't like to be redundant in policies. And so there's two options.
Go back and add a clause to that other policy.
Yeah, we can definitely deal with that later. I wonder if for policy four, if changing the header would be more effective? So it's not just a general release of students, but like release of students in X situation, you know, like, like changing the header so it's not just like a general statement about release of students. Since this is talking about a very specific instance. And then I think, take, looking, taking a look at that other one, and then perhaps referencing, like we could always edit this to reference, like, for general release of student information, look at policy, blah, blah, blah.
So release of students in the event of parent detainment or something like that.
Something like that, Megan, to make it more clear that this isn't just.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is going to have to be more specific about what the section.
Throw something out there.
Sure.
I went back to Jamestown when I was part of writing the policy in Jamestown. That policy is called legal responsibility in regards to educating students in immigration policy. Just wondering, so if I went back, what safe schools, what this is, do we change the title of the policy to reflect what is specifically in the policy? The Jamestown policy is legal responsibility in regards to educating students and immigration. And it's specifically about ICE and immigration.
Because I think the safe schools are thinking of everyone.
Back in 2018.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's fine, if that's.
Say it again?
Legal responsibility in regards to educating students and immigration.
And or in?
And.
Does that, okay, so that. So Megan, did that other suggestion about that last paragraph that you were bringing concern about, do you think clarifying that header might help differentiate between that and the other policy?
I think Ken's suggestion then makes that go away.
Well, I mean, I think that helps from the overall general standpoint of the title of the policy, but for that last paragraph, like if you were not really paying attention, like that is, is slightly broad, I think, for a header. But if, if Megan agrees that, that change in the title of the policy helps that last paragraph, then I don't care.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so leaving that header as is, but change in the policy to be consistent with what Jamestown has, is that where we're headed here?
Yeah, for, for the, the header, yep.
No, for the title of the policy.
I'm sorry, the title of the policy, yeah.
And then leaving that header as is, because it's obviously, it's under a more clear delineation of what that policy is.
Right.
And this way, just so you don't get confused with the same exact, we also have in there, because we have a policy.
Yeah, that's great.
That's what we talked about.
And that's where there's no confusion.
Yeah, I think that's great. Other questions or concerns?
So then that stays under students, not the first.
Right.
So it'll stay JIK now, not.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it, it just has to match.
No, I understand, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, all right, so 1A, little thing, can we put a period at the end of 1A?
I'm just going to state, formatting for the record, I write the policy words and Jules formats those. So any formatting issues will get taken care of in the final.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about the.
You don't have to worry about it. Emails, letters, dots, anything like that, and Jules will take care of all of that.
Note them though, if, if there's something specific.
I might still.
But we'll also check it for consistency.
You can, but that all gets picked up in the final thing.
Okay, 1G, it says the superintendent may waive any age or proof of residency. You know, this is going to sound silly, but if you waive proof of age, right, are you allowing someone to come into the school? But like, like I know there are laws for the age limit, the eldest age limit we can allow into our school district to actually be enrolled as a, as a student. But if you don't know their age and someone wants, you know, someone comes and wants to enroll, how, how does that work when you say you can waive any age? When you say you can waive any age, proof of age?
That's a good question, when you put it in terms of, like, if it's someone that's older. I mean, we, based off of what documents we have in documentation, we have to put them in the next grade or the grade they should be in, based on any, any documents we have from their previous school.
Is it waiving? To read this, just to read the sentence again, though?
What we're saying is we don't need a proof of residency, or a birth certificate, or anything that documents how old they are. What we use or any other school documents that have that show what grade level they're coming from.
Okay.
So if they're coming to us from Cranston or another district.
And they were like in a secondary grade, they'll go into secondary.
Right, we're, we're basing it off of what documents we have that we're getting from the prior school system.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, so there's, there's gonna be no confusion if somebody, like, a senior comes who might be 24, 25 years old.
It sounds, Andrew, is it?
Well, that, that, under RIDE, if they're, if they're coming from another public school, they'd be allowed to attend. RIDE has, RIDE has guidance that you have to let them in beyond 18 if they meet certain criteria.
If we have, if we have proof that they were hidden.
Yeah, 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 exactly, that's what I mean, if they're coming from another district.
The second part of that sentence, though, I think is important to protect the safety of the registered, registering student, and so the waiving, the requirement might be like waiving, like, putting it into ASB, like, it might not, like, Ken might see it, but it might be waiving the requirement to put it into ASB, perhaps, because we were looking towards that, protecting the safety of the registered student, not require nothing.
It's in the superintendent's discretion, you can waive certain things and accept different things, whatever, you know, he or she feels are appropriate.
What's that last part, though? Or to comply with applicable state and federal law?
Sounds like some good old-fashioned lawyer language that just covers you in any event.
Okay, great. Um, any, any thoughts or suggestions on that? Uh, Megan, for G?
Yeah, my, well, my ques- my suggestion is to ask the superintendent what he thinks, or, or what, I mean, it, or should we change the language?
I mean, I would say, I mean, typically what we do in this incident, we're looking for school records, right? So if we have to, if someone comes in and they have no proof of age, because they don't have a birth certificate, um, or anyone, age on it, or residency, right? And we're looking at, really, it's the age going, that would be in the grade, we're looking at previous school records that we can have.
But what if they don't have?
We have nothing.
If we have nothing at all?
That's not, that's not uncommon.
Right.
It's not uncommon, and I think that, and that goes to the state and federal regulation. I think that, that's my take on it, because I've actually had this discussion with RIDE. The only thing RIDE will tell you that is absolutely unequivocally required is immunization records. And so if you're coming from, you know, you're coming from somewhere where you don't have, you, you didn't, it happened even in the Midwest, when they had all those disasters, kids were coming with no, no, no anything, no school records, they would literally add nothing, and RIDE was saying, enroll them.
And I'm not doing this to be difficult, I'm doing this to be protective, because we do have other students in the district, so we have to look out for all of our students.
I had the same questions, and, and that's, that's the right explanation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
The right explanation?
No, you're doing it to be, we do have other students in the district, and I'm doing that to be protective.
Because you're talking about, uh, this is talking about the student who comes without a record, but you also have to look at, you know, we have to make sure that we're taking care of every student, so.
But what does the implication mean that the student doesn't have, like?
If a student doesn't have a record and comes in at 25 years old, I, I'd be concerned. Walking around a high school, or a 16-year-old in a middle school. I, that, honestly, that worries me. Age, age-wise, that worries me.
Well, and it also, I mean, if we have, if someone comes in that looks much older than high school age, and we have no proof, I mean, that, I mean, it is something we question. But, but again, if, if we're being told by RIDE, you have to enroll them.
Right, then you have to enroll them.
But even, even lack of this, probably without this policy, we still have to.
Without that language, it wouldn't matter. Okay, any suggestions on how to address Megan's concern, but also knowing that RIDE would make us do it anyways? Ken?
I'm reasonably confident, I'm trying to pull it up, all this language comes directly from the AG's guidance.
Yeah, I would imagine you did not write that. Um, Ken, are you comfortable with G the way it is?
I mean, I, I'm okay with this, the way it is, um, because we have to do it no matter what, even if we don't have this.
Other questions?
Yes, um, what is the difference between, or what is an unauthorized visitor? What is the definition of unauthorized visitors?
Where, where are you in the?
Um, two, section two, and I believe now I'm at, um, two A.
Thank you.
The first, all unauthorized visitors.
I would say it's any person, if we have someone that says we want to come into your school, and they're not a parent, and they're not a visitor that we're expecting to have, then they're unauthorized, and we don't want them to live there.
Okay. What about non-public school areas of our public schools? Which is in two B?
Oh, you lost me. Say it again.
Two B, not, exactly. What are non-public school areas in our public schools? It's in two B.
Yeah, yeah, I see it, I see it.
So it would be a non-public area, so think about schools and where, areas of schools that are locked, right? So a public area would be where we allow visitors to come into prior to going throughout the school. So the vestibule, right? That's where they come in. Once you have any of the locked doors go within the school, right? That's what we're saying, they can't go past those locked areas to get into other areas of the school. So if someone came to a school that unauthorized, or the law, the federal law enforcement, or ICE officer, um, well, I want to make sure what I'm saying matches with what is. Yeah. They would enter the area for the vestibule, right? But they should not go there, pass that area, depending on the school. Some schools have additional, hmm, trying to think of our schools, no. So they shouldn't go past that vestibule area.
So this includes hallways, so, as in, as a non-public school area, or restricted area? So to get from a hall, to get from the, as soon as you walk in the vestibule, let's say at the high school, you have to walk super long.
But they shouldn't be going past that vestibule. We're saying a non-public area, right? They shouldn't even be entering the school.
So like, the vestibule technically is counted as sort of public, someone could walk in there, but then you can't get past.
Right, so based on this policy, right? Based on the setting, they should not be going past the vestibule, they should not be going in the office.
Where, where are you thinking, Megan? Kind of where, what, what, what's the concern?
Um, the concern is, I just think this language is, um, just a little wonky.
Do you want to propose something else?
Um, yeah, I actually, my proposal is that we don't need this policy, because we have, follow the laws. Um, but that was, we've decided that we were gonna go ahead with this policy, so now I'm just pointing out things that.
No, I just meant for like, non-public, if you wanted a different word.
Um, nope. Nope, I mean, I just wanted clarification on what exactly non-public meant, and unauthorized visitors and restricted area.
Andrew, do you think that we need to provide any clarification about those, or do you think that they are?
I'm comfortable with them as written, but it's not.
So I'm gonna ask you a question, just, let's, I'm thinking further into this, okay? So we put this into practice. This says any request for access to non-public areas. So an ICE officer, federal agent, rings the bell at high school. You know, once you get past the vestibule, you're in a public area. Can we let them in the office to speak to them? And then if they request we want to go further, we say no? Because this says, and it doesn't say don't allow them, it says any request for access to non-public areas.
And what we've done is we.
Because this is what will be questioned by our.
Yeah, and there should be a district protocol that presented to every single building exactly how you want that handled. Some districts have elected to say, no, you have to wait outside, other districts have elected to say, you can come into the main office and sit here, that's totally up to the district. I would suggest, whatever you do decide, that it's codified and that it's, it's disseminated to each and every single building, so everyone's on the same page, and that the staff are trained on it.
Oh, good, I was gonna actually ask that question. And the next question is, do we need to provide anything to, um, ICE on our policies? Like, what our district policy is?
Not to ICE necessarily, but all the staff should, I mean, all the staff should be trained to know that if ICE officer, i- i- if any visitor comes in, here's the protocol. If it's an ICE officer, we ask for name, badge number, you know, do you have a judicial warrant, do you have a, you know, that sort of thing, take it out. Like I said, some clients have said, you know what, we're comfortable with, with federal law enforcement, or any law enforcement, coming in, we're in the meeting office. We've had others that have said, we prefer that you stay outside in the public area, which, to be perfectly honest with you, in today's day and age, is outside the building, right? It's not like the old days where you could walk into the main office, anybody, and then you had to stop. In almost every district now, every school has, you know, a locking mechanism, you can't even get into the building. But that's really a protocol that, that, that should be developed at the district level, and then should be disseminated to all the staff and trained.
Am I allowed to talk about the guidance that I provided back in February to our staff based on this policy right now, or no? For clarification?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not confidential.
So the guidance that was provided prior to this policy going on, what I wrote up as a memo and provided to our staff in, I think it was February, sorry, January 29th. And I reviewed this with Andrew before sending it out. And here it says, if an immigration officer seeks to enter a building, you do not need to let them in. Like, in parentheses, you can delay entry pending approval from district legal counsel. Similarly, similarly, if an immigration officer approaches staff in the custody or control of students at a respective location, example, sporting event, field trip, extracurricular activity, school bus, you are not authorized to release children to him or her. Instead, I go over listing of what they need to do, and we'll let, and talk spell, I'm not gonna attempt to do anything, but, if you have in there, it's telling you, you do not need to let them in the building.
Yeah, so it's consistent with it for all?
Speak to the druthy phone outside.
So it's consistent with this policy?
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, it's 9:45.
Why, I'm well aware.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Can you remind me, if somebody asks to call the question, why I need two-thirds, right?
Two-thirds, and I think everyone has had enough, two, no, enough call the question, you need two-thirds vote, though.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, what, what call the question means for the new school community members is, a member can say that they would like, that they think we've had discussion, and that we, they'd like to have the vote, and so then, you need a second for it?
Yes, I believe so, yep.
Are you sure?
Nope, not positive.
I don't think you're right, but, but in an abundance of caution, do we have? Yeah, so for call the question, for reference rules, so Ms. Lima made a motion to call the question, do we have a second for call the question?
So I just had a quick question, so I can't ask any more of my questions?
Not if two-thirds of the body says.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Duly noted.
Motion to end debate and immediately vote depending motion requires a second and two-thirds vote to pass.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, we will continue discussion.
Andrew, did you, do you recommend that we do train the staff, then, in addition to the memo that Dr. Duba sent out?
I mean, I think, I think all the staff needs to be spoken to, yeah. I mean, whether it's a formal training, whether the, you know, superintendent, or someone just goes to each building, hey, here's the protocol, do you have any questions? I do think that you want everybody, I mean, that's, that's a lot of pressure on, on.
Yes, yes, yes.
Someone on the, on the frontline, so to speak, so, yeah, absolutely.
For the, for the policy, do you want something added regarding training and/or it to this? Because as far as like, protocol and, and training, the administration will, will obviously handle that piece once the policy is approved, but is, is there language that you want added into the policy regarding that?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
No, I, I just wanted to know if you recommended that there would be training, or some sort of, just, consistent discussion.
Other questions for the, um, policy?
Yeah, on two B, what exactly does, um, must generally possess mean? That just seems kind of vague. As in the first line, federal law enforcement officers, including but not learned of ICE, must generally possess.
Yeah, judicial warrant, as opposed to, as opposed to a notice to appear or an administrative subpoena. The judicial warrant is basically what the attorney general's office is telling us, the document that they, they want to see from the federal officer, and they're.
Just, what's must generally, though?
Wouldn't you just say must?
Like, just, why not just say must for that?
Right, from the attorney general. I, I, well, because I suppose, I suppose there could be a situation where they've got maybe an arrest warrant for something different. I mean, I think that's why the, the concept is, again, we know what this is geared towards, but I mean, it, it's entirely possible that a federal agent, an ATF agent comes with something completely different, so, you know, that, that's when, that's why what we're trying to do is really, at the frontline, get the documentation that's being provided, figure out who's asking the question, and then figure out whether they have a legal right to go in and do what they need to do, or they don't.
Okay, thank you. Two E and H, um, what if the superintendent or designate, designate aren't immediately available? Or that we can't immediately get in touch with legal counsel? So what happens then?
So, we haven't had that problem yet, and what I, what we've suggested is in the protocols, that, again, you have like a four or five-person chain, that if the superintendent's not available, here's the next person. I know, like, in our office, what we've done with multiple clients is given like, four or five, all, all the attorney's cell phone numbers, so if you can't get Andrew, you can get Aubrey, if you can't get Aubrey, you can get Deidra. If, you know, whatever it is, now, we haven't had that issue at all, but, um, you know, yeah.
So it's protocol.
But I think that that also goes to the training, because someone's gonna be sitting there and have, you know, want an immediate answer, and I think they, they need to get that immediate answer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding the policy?
Okay. Um, we are in a motion to approve, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, right, I just lost my, yeah, we were.
Well, do we need to motion to make all these changes that we are? So I will withdraw my motion, and I will make a motion to approve the policy with the following changes, taking out the last sentence in G, and changing the policy name to legal responsibility in regards to educating students in immigration policy.
And we all decided that the, the J I K is staying as it is correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the amended changes from this discussion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All of them favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Can you name Ms. Lee? Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next one.
Um, so, the next one is.
Wait, hold on, before you do that, I need a motion. It's 9:53.
Oh. Motion to extend to.
Well, I'm just looking, we're only on B of unfinished business, and we still have to get to the unfinished business.
Till 10:30?
Should we see what we can table? Is there anything?
No.
No.
I'd say make it 11:00.
Okay. Okay, fine. So would you make it?
Well, I made 10:30, do you want to? Okay, can I, I'll make a motion to extend till 11:00 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion to discuss EEA to Transportation Services.
Second.
This is the second read of a thoroughly revised and updated transportation policy. It details what the various modes of transportation are, the responsibilities of transportation employees and contractors, spoken eligibility requirements for transportation, as well as maintenance of the buses. It's been reviewed by district and building level administrators, the Transportation Department, and the Bus Contractors Association. You have before you a revised version, which addresses the questions that have been raised and mentioned at the first reading, and, uh, it includes language that adds extra, any extracurricular trip to the definition of a bus trip, and changes bus assistant to bus aide. Administration believes that the language regarding who can provide permission for releasing students on an out-of-town travel should remain as it is presented, and at this time, I am recommending approval with those revisions, so I will make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any further discussion or questions regarding EEA? Okay, there are none, um, call the question, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Next, please.
Uh, I will make a motion to, uh, discuss implement weather.
Second.
Uh, this is the second read of revisions to an existing policy, which was updated to align the policy with actual practice in the schools as it relates to outdoor recess. You have before you a revised version, which addresses the issue we discussed at the last read about the factors that go into the decision and the timing. I wanted Ken to take a look at those, um, so...
He said Rob's in charge, so.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, I am recommending approval with those revisions. Rob, are you okay with this?
Yeah, I, I, we had, we had looked this over, and I, I gave you some feedback.
But I don't think that you saw what I had put in there when you gave me that feedback, because what you said was different from what we talked about at the meeting.
Okay.
What's the timing change, can you clarify, Jen?
Uh, well, we talked about the meeting, uh, Ken had kind of talked about all the factors that go into, like...
Oh, the 5:30 in the morning thing?
The 5:30 in the morning thing, so I had kind of added language based on what he said.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you had just responded to me and said, "Yeah, bold the word." So the two things are different, so I just want to make sure that what got put in there
Okay.
is okay, so...
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
We're good?
We are good.
Okay, all right, so... He's confident, he's making confidence.
Sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Well, I think it was good, because you kind of explained, because I think not everyone realizes all that goes into
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I was good with everything, but I just wanted to bold the word, but everything else is okay.
Okay, no bolding, are you okay with the words? Because we don't bold anything, so.
Oh, we don't bold anything, okay.
That's against policy.
Sorry, I thought you I could ask you that, we're clearly, uh, in that part of the
Right, have you heard the discussion?
Yes, I am in agreement with the wording.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so motion to approve?
Don't you already have, are you already in it?
I, I am, I'm asking somebody to, please, for the love of God, make a motion.
I made a motion to approve.
Second. All right, so we motion to approve, second, any further questions or conversation, including, they messed it up, right? Stephanie, didn't we already have it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she had already
Yeah, please ignore what they just said, they already were in discussion for approval on this one.
Can I just ask whether wind chill was taken out of the recess part?
That was, Ken.
I always ask that, same thing. When you look at guided ride, it's been nationally, it wasn't there. I mean, we can, we can put it back in, it doesn't hurt to have it there.
No.
I was just wondering.
Because it, it could be 40 degrees and the wind blowing, and it'd be technically below 20, so we've had some big shifts in the last couple of weeks even, so I, I was just curious, I didn't know why.
We can put it back in there?
Doesn't matter to me, but.
We want to.
It came out, because
Just from what we're looking at, from information that we had.
I think we should leave it out. A valid question, but I think based on what the administration has and what our current practices are.
And it still has, if I'm, if I'm correct, I'm sorry, I had to step up and use the restroom.
Rob, Rob said it was cool.
Principals still have the ability, if they think for some reason they need to keep children in because of weather, they have the right to do so.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe that's why the windshield doesn't really need to be in there, as they would.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, uh, call the question, all in favor, uh, please say aye.
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 Okay, uh, so, I make a motion to discuss JCAA school district.
Second.
You can't just make, okay. No, because I'm not, uh, this one is purely discussion. So this is the second read of revisions to an existing policy, updated to establish a process and procedures for the establishment of attendance boundaries for new schools, and for the review and revision of attendance boundaries for individual class assignments. The intent was to have this policy in place prior to the redistricting advisory committee beginning its work. Implementation of this policy will be effective from the date approved with the understanding that it may require additional steps, but will not require starting from scratch. I appreciate the feedback that we've received from the community on this policy, and I've made some revisions, which are reflected in the draft that is presented this evening, which reflects some of it. I want to open this up for discussion by the committee, probably not tonight, as there are some items that need input specifically. Some of them include, do we want to set a goal for the minimum amount of time between redistricting? Like, for example, we shouldn't do it any less than five years apart. I also, um, want to, um, raise some of the points, um, tonight about requesting, um, some of the feedback was, I'm going to request that administration note on the advisory committee pages, like who the co-chares are for each group and list their email addresses, that was one of the points of feedback that we got.
Is that in the policy?
It's not, um...
So you're asking it to be added?
No, 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 I'm just kind of saying, like verbally, like I think that's something.
So that's already, I already did that when I went and made changes to the redistricting. I'm going to check, but.
It's the only one. But that's, okay, let's stick to the policy.
Yeah, okay, stick to the policy, so, and I'm also going to be looking for feedback from the committee on the amount of time, um, between, I guess, of that, and utilization percentages. So, I'm not going to make a motion to approve this policy tonight, I'm going to ask that we review this and come back to discuss it at the next meeting. And there's a couple of other points, uh, Rob and Ken had kind of commented on, and I will email those out to everybody, do not respond to me, just come prepared to discuss those at the next meeting. Okay? Yeah?
So, so are you making a motion to table?
No, I just made a motion to discuss. Like, we don't have to approve on the second read, so I want to just kind of, this is a big one, I don't want us to approve it tonight.
So actually, can, can I ask, is it at all possible or recommended that the actual redistricting advisory committee look at this policy as well? Like, to bring it to that policy, so that they can present feedback or look through it?
Yeah, you could do that, I don't see why not, I mean, the policy goes out to everybody.
Yeah, so we can just, like, for instance, so Monday is our next meeting, I, I, because I do have a bunch of things I'd like to discuss, but I'd also like people's feedback, um, so if we could put it on the agenda for...
Yeah, can I recommend that you, like, redline it?
Yeah.
Not recommend, like, suggest, ask that you, like...
Right, like...
And then give me, like, a redline.
No, they should just provide, if the advisory committee wants to make recommendations to the policy, they should make a motion about what recommendations they would like to make, and then it can come up to the school committee at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so we can get that on the agenda for, because I think that's really important. I mean, half the, you know, committee was giving the feedback on this anyway, so, okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Any other, um, questions, comments, concerns regarding this one at this point?
No.
If not, I, do we need to table? Yeah, we need to.
No, because it's just a second.
It was just a discussion.
It was just a discussion.
So we're just not voting?
Is that fine, Andrew, we just leave it?
Yep, just leave it.
All right, okay, moving on to the next one.
Uh, I'll make a motion to discuss JCA, assignment of students to schools.
Second.
This is the first read of a revision of an existing policy that establishes the designated, designated school of attendance for resident students enrolled in the North Kingstown School District. We pulled in information from our existing JCAR, establishing attendance boundaries, and JCAC, deviation from attendance boundaries policies, and expect to sunset those once this revised policy is approved. This revised policy details how a student is assigned to a school and the circumstances under which that assignment could change. We will see this policy one more time before voting on it.
Any questions or comments regarding JCA?
Yeah, I have to be very honest, I just didn't feel, I didn't have enough time to look through this one, because, is this?
We'll see it again.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the first read.
Okay, so it's okay if I don't, you know, like, I can bring comments next time around? Okay. And, and same thing, sorry, well, never mind, okay.
Yeah, for any of these first-read ones, um, they're just being presented to the committee, and then you can bring edits or comments to the next meeting, um, that we can incorporate on the floor.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, I'll make a motion to discuss JCAR and JCAC.
Second.
So these policies have been incorporated into JCA, assignment of students to schools, and will be recommended for deletion once that policy is approved. We'll see these policies one more time before voting on it. Make a motion to discuss JFAA.
Wait, any discussion regarding this?
No.
Okay. Making a motion to discuss JFAA, admission of resident students.
Second.
This is the first read of a revision of an existing policy that establishes the process for enrollment of students into the North Kingstown School District. We pulled in information from our existing JFAB, admission of non-resident students, and expect to sunset that once this revised policy is approved. We've added information on the registration process for kindergarten and pre-cated this policy, and we will see this one more time before voting on it.
Okay, any questions or discussions on JFAA? Okay, and then, the last one, please.
Uh, I'll make a motion to discuss JFAB, admission of non-resident students.
Second.
Uh, this policy has been incorporated into JFAA, admission of resident students, and will be recommended for deletion once that policy is approved. We will see this policy one more time before voting on it.
Okay, any questions or discussion regarding that?
No.
Okay, that goes us to the end of policies, let's move on to item E, can I get a motion for that?
Make a motion to discuss.
Okay, give a second.
Second.
Okay, everyone's been provided with a document from Mr. Mazanati for a request, so, for some details, is there any questions or comments regarding that? In the interest of time, I don't think we need to have, we, we can read it, so if anyone has any questions, sorry, I can think of a nicer way to say, let's just ask questions as we already have seen it in the packet.
I did have two questions.
Sure.
The first one is, I, I may have missed it, but did it say in here what DA is using their funds for?
No.
Okay.
Um, they, no.
Okay, can you just find out and let me know?
Sure, yep.
And then, just the other thing, I just, I was concerned to see more than one note about replenishing art supplies, especially after the numerous conversations during the budget process. Like, I would expect to see, like, grant money being used for, like, bonus things, like fun things, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, it was put to teachers that it was going to be based on what, what was in line with what teachers felt was needed for their classrooms.
Yes.
And so that's what they, that's what they submitted, um, it wasn't all that, those
No, I know, but it was more than one mention, and it, it's concerning that that's what they are using, like, bonus money for, like, that's what they felt was needed, like, I would hope that needs would be accommodated for budgets and not for grants.
Noted.
I just wanted to note, that's it, yep.
Yeah, noted, and then I think, you know, just maybe quantifying what that is, so that next year for the budget conversations, we can have a, a better understanding of, of what that might look like. Just because I think to Jen's point, like, we, we want to fund
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
But also, I get, and this is this year's budget, too, you know, not, and so the conversation we just had is about FY '26, this is '25, it's also March, and maybe there's been a lot of art.
I just would like to see, like, when we get a windfall like this, for the teachers to be able to do, like, amazingly, like, bonus fun things with their students, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions, um, regarding the grant breakdown that Mr. Mazanati presented to us? And it looks like Morgan also assisted.
Yeah, oh, yeah, several people did, yeah.
I just saw Miss Odell's name on the bottom, so.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Perfect, let's move on from that item, thank you very much, Rob. Dialogues in Democracy Night, um, wanted, this one, we got tabled a couple of times, I just wanted to... Is there no attachment? Hold on. So, one of the things I think is important for the school committee is making sure that we're listening to the students, and figuring out some way to, like, prioritize or discuss dialogues in democracy projects, because in the past two years of being on the school committee, we see a lot of repetitive projects and, and things like that, and so I wanted to put it on the agenda, uh, one with the hopes of kind of reviewing what, what was on there, but we can definitely email that out to folks, uh, but also kind of thinking through and, and having the administration think through kind of how we can strategically use the feedback that we're getting from students at events like that, to think about our plans, et cetera. And so it's not, not looking for a definitive answer tonight, but I didn't want to have another cycle go through and not have just brought up the fact that I think they're giving us really valuable information and needs about what they are hoping for in their schools, but we don't have a mechanism to kind of think through or implement that.
Do you think it could be, too, I know we go, like, I wonder if they could present it to, you know, I feel like there's so many people and the parents are there that night, it actually would be nice if we could just go one-on-one with some of them, you know, like the teacher thinks, like, the top, whatever amount, that could be where we could impact something.
Look, and look at what all of the topics are, right? There's a lot of topics that overlap, so you don't need tens, twelve students coming to you to talk about recycling, or school start times, or parking lot issues. Think, you know, look at, okay, what are all of the topics that the students are submitting to their teachers? The teachers kind of go through and look, and they will hear the top concerns, and maybe those concerns are brought to administration first, just because sometimes they don't have all the information, and I suggested that to, um, a few of the teachers, it might be good to have conversations with some of us coming into your classes, to give them some of the information that they may need about what's going on, and then they can, you know, take their presentations, and maybe some of them are then presented in a school committee meeting.
Yeah, because one of the girls had, like, composting, like, connected her with Trish, so she was so excited that she's now going to be a part of the get the phone out, um, not realizing that was going on, so.
Yeah, I know that, like, I've, I've corresponded with several students around issues typically related to things that fall under the Assistant Superintendent department, um, related to curriculum, um, related to other, other matters that are in that jurisdiction, so, um, it's fairly common that we do that, and, um, you know, we've gotten some great ideas from that, and we've had some really passionate students who, um, bring forward some really good ideas to enhance our curriculum that we're actually in the process of, of, of moving towards. So that's exciting.
I kind of looked at some of the projects over the past, like, four years, and so glad the water filling bottles are at the high school, so they don't have to look at another presentation on that next year. Technically, there's only one.
They have one, the rest are going to be in the research.
That's okay. On the third floor.
And all those broken ones are coming out.
But you, when you just rattle off on the top of your head, like, parking is, like, over the past four years, that one comes up all the time, and so I think that's something, like, when we look at, like, our long-term, like, capital plans and things like that, it's really important to take some of these things that keep popping up, like, year over year, like Erin said, um, parking, start time, curriculum request, I think that's an important thing to consider, too, because the students have some really great ideas about classes that they'd like to see. And school meals is another thing, um, i- in various, like, shapes and forms, but, um, those are, like, the top. Water bottle was, like, way up here, but, um, you know, so I, and I do think, and also, like, folding and participatory budgeting also. So, um, just, you know, things to consider.
What was that last thing you just said, I'm sorry?
Participatory budgeting, where, like, we involve the students in the budgeting process, like, give them, like, a little bit of money, and like, have them, you know, like, what would you spend it on, like, if you could use it?
Any other kind of thought, initial thoughts on this? I was interested to have, so, Ken, maybe as far as, not to add things to the slate, but maybe at some point, could the administration think about maybe some of these things, but not this cycle, obviously, we'll see democracy projects this spring, but kind of thinking through what maybe next year... Yeah, I'm not expecting anything from May, May will be exactly the same, we'll go, they will say the same things to us that we've heard for two years, uh, but maybe for thinking for next school year, maybe some enhancements on how we can make their projects meaningful, and then also how we, thinking about how we can work it into our process for budget, um, or, or, like Jen said, long-term plans. Any other thoughts on that? Great, thank you. Moving on to item G, um, can I get a motion for that?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, and so last week, um, we had, um, the presentation around the temporary advisory discipline committee, they had presented their, um, document, and so we were looking for kind of some follow-up, um, recommendations on kind of what next steps might be, and looking for some, some thoughts from the administration.
Sure, I, I, sure, I remember last week kind of being a little confused about what was coming out. It was at the end of the meeting, I know there was a lot said, I, I read the memo, the memo is, is pretty clear, and I think it's, it's also pretty consistent with, with efforts we're currently making, that we're going to continue to make, right? So PBIS for being one of them is a district-wide focus right now, it's a, it's a, um, it's a, it's a constant point of communication going on at every level in the schools around establishing common practices with regard to positive behavioral supports, establishing common expectations from school to school, common values, reinforcing those values, trying to approach behavioral, um, student behavior from a positive, uh, positive lens, and, and acknowledge and, and recognize that, that type of work, and that is, that is an effort that we're going to be continuing to make. We're also going to be sending people to trainings on this, specifically at the middle level, and, uh, we're going to be looking to at that, at the high school level as well, with, with the PBIS piece. And then the code of conduct consistency, again, is, is, is very much an issue, an issue we're working on to make sure is, is in place for next year, the consistency from school to school at each level, um, to arrange a tiered behavioral framework with a range of intervention options, um, kind of a, a, a matrix, if you will, of, of being clear about what behaviors constitute what response, and a consistent way across all schools and all levels. And then the restorative practices piece, again, is, is, is something that is being done in po- I would say in pockets right now, but we can do more, of course, to kind of make it more of a standardized practice from school to school and from level to level. We have some teachers that are doing a fantastic job with that, that do it regularly, and, and the idea of using the restorative practice to build a classroom community, to build a, a sense of equity and voice, all good practices, but we're looking to expand that and make that more of a, a commonly practiced, um, strategy, if that makes sense.
My... And I think that's what we were kind of going on to, to formalize it more, to make it more of a, a common strategy. I think the, the initial part of the first request was to include the high school attendees to that training this year.
Yep.
And, and to go ahead and include them, so that work could begin, you know, with the administrators who were here over the summer. And to try to, to put a timeline on that process, so, um, that this gets done in a ti- in a more timely manner instead of just leaving it kind of
Absolutely.
You know, to, to say that this should be done, and basically be able to have student and parent and other stakeholder feedback, I think it was November, um, that what, you know, that it shows in the memo, just to make sure that we're making progress, and that we have some, like, checking points to, to make sure that we're following
Yep, absolutely.
What we want to do.
Yeah, I know that we have some grant money available for PBIS training that we're, that we're using for, um, that purpose, so I can double-check with Jody on just where we are with that, with, with people attending.
What we had heard at the advisory level was that only maybe a handful were, were going, um, or were planned on going, and I think the, the committee had thought about trying to expand that a little bit, to try, I think the biggest thing that came out of those discussions was lack of consistency from, from school to school, like, certain good things were happening in different pockets, but not across the board. So if you switched from one elementary school to another, like it's not consistent, yeah.
We want that consistent, we want to make sure that's just consistent in the schools.
Other questions or thoughts on the follow-up?
So the question that I had raised the last time was that the, and, and I think everything that you said was great. But that the recommendations to me, and maybe I'm just not understanding, it seemed to focus on changing the behavior and not on the response to behavior and the practices.
The practices.
So I'm going to respectfully disagree with that a little bit.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe I don't understand.
Because, yeah, so PBIS, the whole approach that is absolutely about the response to behavior. Because the idea, the philosophy behind it is that it's going to be more of a proactive and positive approach to who we are in terms of our values, our culture, our expectations. And like, these are the things that we expect from everybody, not just from students, but from everybody. In terms of how we interact, how we communicate, et cetera. And it's to really kind of focus on how we recognize and then reinforce that kind of positive behavior that we see. And so it is a different, from an adult's perspective, it's going to be more of an intentional focus on that as opposed to just waiting for something bad to happen and reacting to it. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but the issue and the reason why the committee was formed was because that the, the discipline is being like enforced disproportionately, right? Like so student A and student B do the same exact thing, but the, the black student is getting disciplined more harshly than the white student. So I'm not sure how a positive response solves that problem.
I think it also goes back to the practices. So part of PBIS is not just looking at how we're responding, but it's also looking at what those expectations are and breaking those expectations of what the, what the appropriate expectations are at all settings within a school. And then gets into what those minor infections are, those major infections are, what are those disciplinary consequences. And then it goes into the practices you're putting in place. So for practice, whatever it may be, now you're outlining that's what the practices are. We can make that consistent within the schools and then provide the training on that. So when there's something in question, how does it need to be dealt with? We're actually formulating what you need to be doing and should be doing.
So I think I would like to see some, some form of this committee continue in order to ensure that this is still on track, especially because there hasn't been any review of the data like in a while. To ensure that the steps that are being taken continue, especially because the, the, there has been a task out of the committee to like review the discipline handbooks and, you know, like to do those types of things. And I'm concerned that if we just say, okay, we're all set, we're putting these things in place and then nothing, then.
Like you're looking for some consistent evaluation, like in, in community and student groups.
And I would just kind of jump on about the committee, because I was kind of thinking then like, hey, who's doing all this work? Obviously you need to start with the administration, but we need to be bringing it to someone to review.
Right.
Kind of giving some feedback. And so if you already have a standing committee that has.
That's the, that's the problem.
That's the problem, the committee.
Technically, we don't, right?
But we don't.
It, it expired, we can re-instate it, yeah, we can re-instate it.
But we had people, right? So we had people, where we had some students, we had some staff, we had, you know.
And where is the student voice? If the committee is gone, right?
Committee members. Right.
Alright, so it sounds like Jen and.
We can at least bring that back for the feedback in the end.
So it sounds like Jen and Ken are, are in agreement that re-establishing a committee is not a bad thing?
Yeah, and even if it's not the same committee on the same format, like but something.
Right, and I, I don't want to say now that's a committee and now that committee has to, every month they come up with an agenda. But I think they're using, if those people are still in agreement, right?
So what?
Having that as, we can bring the work to, to be reviewed.
Yeah, so maybe next steps kind of you and I can look and maybe look at the old charge for that one and see if you want to make recommendations to revise it and then we can put it into place. And maybe it's not one that meets monthly, but maybe they meet quarterly and, you know, like we, we'd have to redefine that. And so would that be inappropriate? Like we can take a look at that and then bring it back to the school committee. Jen, one of the things on, and I think at some point it'd be helpful to get a little bit more of a formal presentation on PBIS if that's what we're going to be implementing across the district. Cause at first glance, I think it looks great. And Jen, one of your, one of the things when it talks about the five elements, equity is at the center of their flow chart.
And it's not something, and it's not something new, I've seen it around, I was teaching at Knesset back in like 2005. We went to the training for PBIS, we put an entire program together at Knesset, we had the matrix.
They're the only one that is there. And they're still using it, I think, ish. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on this one? In the interest of time? Alright, so for next steps, it sounds like Rob and his role is kind of moving some of the recommendations forward that were presented for the last one. And Ken and I will look at what a redux committee would look like, yeah?
Can we, can we get clarity on exactly the, the data that the, the committee was looking at that, that we are, we want to be, we want to be aligning directly to the, to the recommendations?
At this point, that data is like four years old, so I, I think that.
Yeah, I can forward you what they.
I mean, I can.
Only because I want to make sure that we're not running in circles. I want to make sure that we're having conversations around, around taking action, making decisions, using our resources to the best of our way to align with the data that we're trying to address.
I, I think, I don't think we should be trying to align to data that's four years old at this point.
Okay, so, so we can get then whatever data is.
I have a sample of what the data was.
I mean, I can give you what the data was, but I, I think if we're going to align to data, we should do a refresh.
Okay, because I just feel like sometimes it can get frustrating, because I know we, we, we are trying to do what we are doing. But, but sometimes I want to make sure that we're just talking in a straight line in terms of what you're looking for, what the, what the committee's looking for.
Yeah, I mean, the data is in the equity audit, like that's.
Yeah, no, I know that, I'm saying that.
There was also additional data for that, from last year provided to the advisory committee.
Pull that up for twenty twenty-three.
But that's, that data is a lot, so, yeah, so.
Okay, so we, we'll find some, we'll get some clarification for that.
Yeah.
And there's, yeah, nope, it's about a point. And so depending on how, what we discuss about what the pieces is, we can kind of set those benchmarks. I think that's one of the pieces too, that within a new administration figuring out those classifications and those baselines is like a very tangible thing. You know, like I think what we noticed when we started looking at that data is that the inconsistencies on how things are recorded. Not that anything's wrong, it's all, but like maybe some thoughts on training and different things about how to put things into the system. Because like bad data in is bad data out, kind of energy, it's hard to track things that aren't being coded the same from school to school.
I understand, I, I think, I think the, the more clear we can be about the problem we're trying to solve, the more likely we are to solve the problem.
Hundred percent, yep.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Thank you for that. Anything else on this one? Okay, let's keep talking. Okay, uh, oh good, H, that's a quick one. Can I get a motion for H?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so this was, so we, this is the pre-K move to Davisville Academy. We had approved the budget, which had the funding, but we had not officially approved the plan to move pre-K to Davisville Academy this fall. And so I asked Dr. Duba to bring this forward so that we can, the school committee can make an official decision.
And I did, one of the changes you were asking me to kind of specify how the fishing cove would be used, that's on page two. On the fishing cove, those five open classrooms are what they would be used for.
Hey, questions regarding?
And the map is updated as well.
The map is wild.
The map is updated, it was a meeting the other day, so OFL is staying, we were talking, moving OFL, they're going to stay in the building.
In DA?
At DA.
Okay.
But that's not what was in the presentation.
Yeah, we changed, so.
He said it's, he just said it was updated.
The map is updated.
Of, the map is updated, but the text is not.
The text is updated, yeah.
It's always updated, okay.
It is, we removed a portion of the text about DA moving off site kind of.
Did I though?
When did that update?
Uh, I, I updated it last week.
Is that, it wasn't what was in the packet when I looked at it last week?
It might not be, I might have sent this before that.
Okay, well verbally we are getting told that OFL is going to say a DA. Other questions, concerns that the committee has regarding this?
The questions that we had asked when Rachel presented to us about pre-K that she was texting, and she was going to get back to us. Did we get those answers?
No, no, no.
I don't remember the questions, sorry.
I think she did answer it, because she was texting Jackie.
I feel like I answered it.
No, but there was more information that.
It was about the waitlist, right?
Yes.
Yep, yep, unders- trying to understand need for typical peers.
I did submit that data.
Uh, what's that, I'm sorry?
I did submit that data.
To who?
Is it in Ken's inbox?
Did you send it to me?
Yeah, it was a while, whenever I was asked for it, I did it that very next day.
It's Ken sweating.
I'm gonna see my inbox is like.
Rachel, Santa, thank you Rachel.
Yeah, I'm.
It's okay.
I can't even remember when I did it, it was a while ago.
No worries, we will find it.
Sorry, Ken.
I'm looking like I have it, I'll look it up. Okay, so can we look for that? Other questions, comments, thoughts?
My position is still the same on this, I'm not prepared to, to make a vote on this until we have all the pieces of the puzzle. I feel like this is part of the greater picture of what are we doing? And I'm also still hoping to get a picture of the whole special ed piece in the district. Like what do we have here at this school? What do we have here at this school? Like what do we have here? I think I'd ask for that like before.
Okay, I thought we discussed that.
I think we, you and I talked about it, and you said, let's put it in writing, and I don't think we, we have it, yeah.
Yeah, we never got it.
We do have a continuum written.
Yeah, I mean, so we can.
There's a continuum.
Okay, I'd like to see it, so, but I also think that this move here is part of like the big move that we're discussing. And I'm just not comfortable making one move as part of the larger picture. And that's, I mean, that's my, and I was very clear about that when I voted yes to allocate the funds. And allocating the funds for me was not a vote to, a, a yes vote on the move.
Other thoughts, questions?
Yeah, would it be helpful for the school committee to do a walkthrough of DA so we could see the classrooms?
I'm going to be, I'm setting those up this week.
Okay. I'd ask Ken, I asked Ken if the.
So I'm going to set it up, because you can't have all five at the same time.
Right.
So.
Technically, could you have all five if we don't talk? I'm not joking. Well, I don't want to, it's the school, they're tied, you know?
Keep in mind, there are kids going to school there, but that's on the other.
Yeah, we can walk like five paces ahead of each other in two rooms.
No, I'm just, I just don't want to waste the administration's time. No, you have to, we just have.
I mean, it just, yeah, it, you could, technically you could do it. You could all get together and sit there and talk about anything that doesn't involve school business, but I mean, my, my.
As we're touring.
My take, you're touring, I, I don't, I don't know how someone doesn't say to someone else, hey.
I have requested to Ken that it would be helpful to offer DA Hamilton, because with, with the conversations about space allocation at Hamilton and fishing cove, just so that the school committee could have.
Could you do it the same way and swap schools?
You could probably do a triangle.
We could, I also recommended that it's during school day, because I think it's best for you to see it while the school's in session, because you actually get the feel of what's happening.
That might minimize the disruption for the staff, at least if it was the same day, right?
Okay, so I'm thinking, so what I'm hearing is that information, so the, the special education, whatever, Rachel used a fancy word. We'd like to see that document, just of the.
Uh, continuum.
Continuum, thank you. The tour to, to the, that piece of it. And then the data that Rachel provided about the waitlist for typical peers.
And just so, like just, in, in my mind, Rachel, just so, I don't know what a continuum is, but like in my mind, what I'm thinking is like at, Hamilton has this number of classrooms for this age group.
Like this program.
This program.
So the, the, what the continuum looks like are what are the specialized programs in each one of the buildings as they currently stand, not the ones that we're recommending?
No, I want to see both.
Okay, so, but, but a lot of these things are very contingent on a change. And the, the change from moving to preschool to DA really is not part of the bigger redistricting.
And I understand that, but in my mind, I'd like to see everything.
Yeah, well, you can, I just, I think the, the, the further we go out, right?
Yeah, that's my concern.
And I'm going to say this happens, no one take offense, this happened with the CTE program, we get really close on timelines, right? I had a conversation with the chair, what more do we need? She asked, you know, clarification on fishing cove and how it was going to use, so that's what I did. And I'm not saying, I'm not, you know what I mean, like we.
I did ask for the other things that we didn't get. Like, I'm just, like.
I honestly, I don't remember when the special ed continuum use was asked for.
No, I asked for it in a meeting, and I'm just one vote, you only need two, right?
But, but the further we go, like we have to go to get a playground, right? There's things that have to get, we need to meet with parents. So every time we say we want more information on something else, we're not going to get there. If we, then it's going to be point whenever approval happens, let's say now we're moving into April, now it's May. We may then say, you know, we really can't do it, because we don't have time to do it at that point.
This is not a surprise though, that I'm asking for this stuff, I've been consistent in my statements ever since the first time this was presented to us, so.
Okay, so with that said, one concern that I have regardless of documentation or whatnot is I am worried that we are going to approve this move and then a lot of pre-K families are going to find out that we did this move and they are going to be very concerned about their students going to Davisville Academy where students, you know, like where students have been taken from their home schools and put there for, for a variety of reasons. And we've gotten a couple of emails about it, but I am concerned about the population that will have students going there. I don't believe, I'm worried that they're going to be post-concerned if we, like I don't. And, and I don't know if we have, and I'm concerned about the answer to them. So like I obviously see the floor plan and, and whatnot, but I, I was just thinking about, like my kids went, Carol and I went to the program. I'm thinking about what, if I was, went then, my little third, three-year-old, like what, what guarantees do I have that my pre-K student will be safe and that it is going to go well for them in this new environment? Especially with a building that, when you go into it, it does not look like fishing cove. It looks like an old abandoned school that hasn't had students in it for, but, you know, like I'm just thinking through like the, the long-term possible challenges with that and the communication.
You think it looks like an abandoned school when you walk through the door?
So can I say something? I, I don't think that, because there was summer squad there this summer.
Yeah, and the flyers and the yelling.
I spent that for years, I mean, I was like that when it wasn't school.
And.
It's my, it's listed.
Well, no, we closed it because of that, we closed it because of population change, and that's why it's closed.
Yeah, yeah.
But can I say, my kids went to summer squad this summer. It does not look, like when the kids were all in there for summer squad and I was in there one day, like it did not look like an abandoned building. Like it was like a happy, full of kids and they were having a great time. Now, I know the other kids weren't there.
Where's, where was summer squad? What part of the building?
At district, um. I really don't know that.
I'm just, and it's maybe, maybe we will.
But I'm just saying, like the kids were actually learning in there, it, it was a positive looking.
Yeah, maybe they will be very cool with it, I just, that is my current concern. And I'm not saying no, I, I, Jen, you know, I'm not there, I'm just expressing my concern that that is what I'm worried about is going to happen. Because I don't.
And, and where they're being placed, you know, where, where preschool is compared to where the, um, high, the middle school and the high school positive pathway program
Other students, sorry?
On opposite sides of the building with locked fob doors, just because there are doors.
Just strictly from a communication standpoint, like just, I just want to like take us back to where we are for the past two meetings with like a bazillion people here, right? They didn't know about the redistricting, which we had been talking about for over a year, right?
Since second grade.
And, until they did. And so while we think we've been transparent about talking about this potential move, I agree with Erin that when and if we make this move, it is going to be, so I think that whether or not we're going to make it, we should start being very transparent about the fact that this is being discussed so that we can get ahead of that and try to avoid some of what we're experiencing now.
Well, we don't want to, I think, communicate if we don't know if it's going to be approved yet. It's kind of hard to do that.
I, I, I think it should at least be communicated as being discussed, because.
Like it, and I'm just brainstorming here at ten thirty-four, would it be poss- would, and I agree with you, Rob, like, right? Like we don't want to tell them about something that's not approved.
Right, it's hard to sell a meeting, oh, we're talking about something.
Yeah, but.
It has been, it has been discussed, we have received many questions from parents that we have answered. We actually have scheduled a parent meeting, but we're waiting for the decision tonight because we felt like it might be premature to have a whole meeting with families before knowing whether or not it was going to be actually approved. So we already have that scheduled, we're ready and willing and able to do that with families. And we've been answering questions honestly and openly about how that building is structured and how it's fobbed. They have different play areas, they have completely different areas that are protected from each other or fobbed in. I also think if they're worried about exposure to behavior, they actually have more exposure where they're currently located than they would at DA, so.
And that's conversation with existing families, correct?
Correct.
Now with people who may be getting ready to move.
No, I think we got a couple too that put in for the lottery. So we've been getting, it is sporadic, so we've been very like, we have talked about it publicly. However, it's really hard to have these like earnest conversations, or like, well, this may possibly sort of happen. It's getting really, to be honest, awkward. And we also are running into timelines too, that, that, so we have a lot of concerns about keep pushing this off. Decision or not decision, it does impact, it does impact the continuum of services we can provide for special ed though.
Just to clarify though, it's not being pushed off, this was just brought to us a month ago?
It was part of the budget conversation back in January.
But it officially was not on the docket, you're correct.
Yeah.
Chris?
That school, you know, from a custodial and a maintenance standpoint is gleaming. I defy anybody to find a speck of dirt in that school. Brian Jennings, the custodian there, and the gentleman in the evening work extraordinarily hard to keep that school in absolute top shape. It is the A number one school in this district as far as cleanliness right now. Is it dated? Yes. Are a lot of our schools dated? Yes, they are. But as far as the, the ban in common, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree in stand-up for that custodial team who do an utterly fantastic job in keeping that place shining.
Yep, I didn't mean cleanliness, I meant like when you walk in, like there's the wa- like, like you just, the look, yeah, the physical building is, yeah.
Okay, yeah, the datedness, and it's hard to adapt, you know, to, you know, accommodate the technology that's necessary.
Similar to Dean's down middle school, when you walk through the hallways, you have to click some of the wires.
Uh, other questions or?
We do have planning for new furniture and things like that, but we have that all budgeted for.
Other questions?
I, I do have another question, is there any way that you could give us, because I know that you mentioned, we talked to, you know, one question from the public was could we use DA potentially as another elementary school? So, and I believe, Rob, you and I have talked about this, can you just be a little bit more specific about, is the goal here to use this? Like I kind of feel like, can we put this to bed maybe if possible tonight? Could, is Davisville Academy the goal to use it as a preschool? And, you know, what it's currently being used for from grades? I believe Rachel, it's going to continue now, grade six. And, um, you know, what it's currently being used for from grades, I believe, Rachel, it's gonna continue now, grade six through twelve, or, or six, six through, right, six and up?
Right, yeah.
I think, I think that, and again, with, with, this process is still, is still ongoing, I, I think, speaking, and we've had conversations around this, the idea of expansion of preschool is, to me, a worthwhile expans, a conversation to have. There's a ton of research backing more, giving more kids access to preschool leads to higher student achievement, it's very much in line with our goals, very much in line with our district mission, and so on and so forth. So I think it's an exciting idea, that, that, that expanding more kids' access to that is, to me, a goal worth pursuing. Um, this gives us that option, it gives us that, this option, because with, with, with Rachel's plan, with her continuum that she's talked about, in terms of, um, you know, building, uh, a specialized program that is more home-based, as opposed to outs, outside of the home base, it opens up space, that space could be used to, again, expand preschool, which, which I think is something that we, as a district, um, should really look into. Um, as far as the DA piece around making it an elementary school, the concern I have with that is, to me, it's not a solution, it's just, it's just shifting the problem somewhere else. All we're doing is creating the same problem, just for a different group of people.
And it's gonna be a much larger shift, too, and it's still going to require a shift from the southern end to the northern end of use of schools, it just makes it into a much larger redistricting.
Yeah, as the most southern.
Right, so, so it, it's, yeah.
Well, and so I guess the reason I bring it up, and specifically for, like, publicly, is can, can you say, once and for all, that this Davisville move, we want it to be specifically preschool? Because, like I said, we're getting suggestions from parents.
That's, that's the plan, I mean, the plan, the plan is for Davisville to become a preschool center, right, that's, that's where we're, we're moving towards, right?
Okay, that's it.
I'm gonna throw this out, though, what if we, but I'm just, what if, in, in the course of your redistricting meetings, you decide, what if we're gonna go through a K school, right?
Let Ken finish, please.
And you decide you wanna do a pre-K K school, I, I think we're still too.
Well, that's my only concern, is the parents are still, and the community is still giving us suggestions, so I'm kind of just, I feel like I'm, I'm stuck. How do I answer them, but then I don't necessarily know what the administration's full decision is, and that's up to you all to bring to us, but at the same time, when we go to the redistricting meetings, or we're trying to answer these emails from parents or suggestions, like, how do we answer them if people are saying, hey, let's turn it into, you know, a friend of mine, let's turn it into, um, you know, let's build a wing of special needs, um, for special needs in, at Wickford Middle School, and then, you know, basically turn the rest of DA, the other half of DA into an elementary school.
So if we look at the building layout, okay, without doing any construction that was already done for that building, there are only, there are twelve large classrooms, like, twelve reg, regular-sized classrooms. So, to say we're gonna put all of the K programs, all preschool programs, we can't, as the building is right now.
Sorry, you're saying for DI?
Right, at DI, we're gonna have to then look at.
I think the, I think the greater, the, the bigger picture comment there was not that one piece, but, but more our concern over, as we explore all options for redistricting and all options for how to utilize our buildings, that there could possibly be a potential that the advisory committee might think that there's a better use for this building than what is currently being proposed, that's what I heard, not the actual pre-K K suggestion. That, that's, I think that's the concern, is that, because we're in this big conversation about long-term plans and long-term utilization of facilities, and how we move students around to best serve their educational needs, like, I think that's the concern. And I know you see this different, but what I'm hearing the committee say is that, in their minds, they could be connected, and they feel like making this, like, that it might be, we might not have enough information on it.
So we're not wanting to look at expanding the preschool and opportunities to expand the preschool and look for additional classroom space for the preschool?
I, I don't think that's what I just said.
No, that's not what I'm, so like, way back when, at the beginning of this whole thing, we had talked about wanting to put, like, pre-K on the middle school, 'cause we believe in expanding the pre, the preschool, the preschool. But what I'm saying right now is, I don't think it makes sense to make one move out of the whole puzzle without looking at the entire puzzle. I think expanding the pre-K is good, but I, wh- while we're in the middle of looking at what we're doing with the rest of the schools, to me, it doesn't make sense to just make one move, because if we make that one move, and then three months later, we go, oh, my god, this move would've been perfect, but we just did this, like, let's just pause and look at the whole thing while we see.
So, I think, can, can the school committee take a vote and give us direction, please, of what you want us to do, is that the one part, like, I, I'd like to hear from all five members, and if you can vote on where you would like us to go with this, that would be helpful.
I'm saying, I don't think we can vote on one piece until we look at everything, that's my one.
What I'm hearing Dr. Dewar say, though, is he wants me to call a question on if we move pre-K to Davisville Academy.
Or, or not even that, like, do you want us to move, kinda change the direction of looking at using this in a different way?
We technically had approved this for the administration building, just to go back in time, school committee-wise, so I was very open to understanding that things evolve and change, you know, and, and I was open to this conversation, like, you know, like, but the school committee gave the direction of that should be the administration building. So, you're here saying, we think it should be pre-K, um, I, I'm hearing some, like, this is too early, like, this is part of the redistricting conversation, I know that you see it differently and see it as an opportunity to expand special education and to, um, have the ability to expand pre-K, there's, there's no current plans for this fall to expand, so I want to be really clear about that, yeah.
Right, when, when, this, this fall, right, this fall would just be the move, and then the following year would be.
Yeah. We will not be able to accommodate any more students this fall than we are if we stay at Fishing Cove, just wanna be really abundantly clear about that, it has a potential of expansion, but it is not that current plan.
It's not for next year.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, it sounds like the question we're asking here is, like, what the vision is.
Yeah.
Okay, like, going back to Megan's question, the question is, we wanna kinda have an idea, what, is this, is the, is the vision for this, that this is going to be a pre-K setting that's going to have room for growth and expansion? Or we gotta keep our options open, that this could possibly use for something alternative to that, whether it's another elementary school, whether it's a kindergarten, or some other element, other thing that can be considered with different input from different people, am I, am I correct there?
Yeah. Can, all right, I'm gonna.
Can we, can we also have Rachel just add to this about this, like, what are the implications for the fall if we don't make this move?
Huge. That's not an answer, um, respectfully, no, so the implications would be, what I'd understand, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that it would, um, change the ability to move some things around to be able to have different special education programs at Fishing Cove, correct?
Can we have Rachel come to the mic and explain that, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can. All right, so our biggest issue is space at the elementary school, I think we've talked about that multiple times, so, uh, we're very limited, even within our specialized programs that are currently in, in elementary schools with space, which impacts, um, numbers of kids that we can service in an appropriate placement. We needed to add the Compass K program, we added to Stony, we redid an entire, um, uh, copy room, actually, to make that happen, and it's fine, but it's very small. So, there really aren't any spaces for me to expand programming, and the problem with that is I have this cohort of preschoolers coming up to kindergarten that will be here this fall, so not three-year-olds, they're four, they're kids this year going into K. We have approximately thirty, oh, maybe twenty-eight, potentially thirty, 'cause we still have kids in referral, we still have kids that are being identified, and there are kids in the community, that we have to figure out how, where they can be placed in an appropriate, in order to give them the level of service that they need. There is no places for me to put any additional programs in this district, there aren't, I, I mean, as it is, a lot of the programs are in spaces I think are too small. Um, it's okay, and we can live with it, but not, there's no place for me to add anything. So, by moving the preschool, that gives us space, it does a couple things. Now, could the upper elementary program at DA stay at DA? They certainly could, but it does allow them to come in and be in a typical school building, where we're having a lot of success for our lower elementary program. I will say the first couple months were rough, they absolutely were, but these were also, some of the kids hadn't been in an all-day school either, okay? So, it allows us to do that, and it allows us to open up a Positive Pathways K program, that's the one I'm most desperately in need of, and also allows us.
Wait, sorry, I'm so trying to follow you, but you lost me.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a difference between the thirty students who need intensive kindergarten and what Camp, Camp, Compass K is?
Yeah, that's one of the, so, we, we have four different programs essentially to work on this, twenty-eight, thirty kids that are coming up, right? We know, I know the names and dates and the date of births, I have like twenty-four of them at this particular time. So, they, they're not all needing the same types of things, when we develop program, when we develop program around the need areas of that student, not their disability labels, nothing else, just what do they need in order to be, to progress? So, that is leading into these buckets, we have Compass K at Stony, they've only had K, 'cause we had a whole cohort of K heads, K kids last year that made up that program, and we didn't have any K go over to Hamilton, because it was a nice cohort, we didn't need to do that. This coming year, I need to add, most likely need to add K back into Hamilton, as well as at Stony Lane, in addition to Positive Pathways K. Then we have some kids that can integrate into regular K with special ed supports. So, it, it allows me to have four different buckets or four different options when we're looking at placing kids, to make sure they're in the most appropriate placement for the needs that they're exhibiting. Right now, the, the addition would be Positive Pathways K, I have no idea where that would go without space.
Dr. Dewar, didn't you say that you anticipated that you wouldn't need as many kindergartens at Stony this year, next year, during the budget presentation?
Um, we wouldn't, but I think also, we're trying to, certainly, gotta give it some space and not just put another program to replace the K program.
Yeah.
So essentially, and also, maybe that's an open building, I would think this Compass K program needs an enclosed classroom.
Very enclosed classrooms, you're telling me.
No, not the fifth kindergarten, that's the problem, it's part of the library.
Not on the case, and there isn't, so we don't have the space, we converted the copy room for the, one of the programs, and we don't have another enclosed space there to put no special education there.
All right, other questions, if we're in a motion to discuss, I would take a motion for anything beyond that, or whatever direction this committee wants to go in.
Um, could you, actually, could you talk, too, 'cause I think another positive thing about moving it is the momentum, like, I, I know.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's, that's the cherry on top of the, I guess, the sundae, in that we have many of our families that, um, live in poverty and don't have the same access to programming, are not having their kids, especially their three- and four-year-olds, be put into ABA clinic work, like a lot of our other families are. There's a couple reasons why that happens, one is the paperwork is pretty cumbersome, to be very honest, the Katie Beckett Medicaid paperwork is pretty cumbersome, we help them with that, they often are refused the first time around, they have to persevere to put in the paperwork again, we help with that component. Then we look for an ABA slot for them, they can't either find one that's gonna work with their family's hours, and/or they get a slot, but they can't, don't have the transportation to get their child to that, that clinic setting. So, our proposal was that we could have an ABA clinic within the preschool, that our three- and four-year-olds could access through their Medicaid funding, and, like, as a separate entity, and then we would have them transported there and come to us for preschool on the other half of the day, whatever day they're not in clinic. That was to increase the intensity of services for kids when they're needed the most, which is three and four. That's in addition to the fact that we've already added this past school year, those more direct instruction programs to deal with the students with more severe needs.
And if we didn't move, we couldn't, like, move that somewhere?
No, we definitely don't have space for that.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
You said that the plan is for next year to move the middle school students from DMS.
No, not next year, the year after.
So currently, the middle school students are at DI, and where do you plan to move them to?
Yeah. I hope them to go to DMS.
DMS, okay.
So that's for not this coming school year, but the school year after, yeah, we have to do some, um, preparation for them.
Other questions regarding the pre-K move to Davisville Academy? We're in a motion to discuss.
How much space does the next step program take up at Hamilton?
Um, next steps is, is actually now, um, oh, what?
We renamed it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, um, it takes up, uh, two small classrooms.
Enough room to fit, um, the classroom that you're trying to fit for kindergarten?
Six. No, and the classrooms are gonna be full with students, and we'll have more students next year.
That's just, that's a compass program.
They really only shut six of them. Compass.
If I had a piece of paper that had all the stuff written down, I'd be a little too.
That's okay, yeah, I, I get it, yeah, I know, yeah, that's a compass program, yeah.
Yeah. Right now, it's Compass one, two, and Compass three to five.
Okay.
Do you have a motion? All right, I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm gonna motion to table that, I'm sorry, Ken, like, I just, I can't get a motion.
I just, for the next meeting, when I ask what's needed, I just, I'm asking that for a reason, so I can prepare and put it out there.
No, hold on, let me just, let me. Do we, you want me to reiterate one more time?
Well, it sounds like now is the special, it's the, I updated how the classrooms are being used, can we talk about that?
Yeah, thank you.
Ken's asking for the special ed continuum, and.
Yeah. Towards the facility.
I just, let's sign up preschool. Exclusively clear, I want that information just for information purposes, but I am a no until things redistrict, but I still wanna see that information, I just wanted to be clear.
I, I'm making a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I be clear about something, too, or can we not move on?
No.
Got it.
So, can I just, I just, please email me what you want for the next meeting, so I can put it together, all five of you, please send me an email, that way I have it, and it's in for the next meeting, please, thank you.
Uh, moving on to I.
Um, I just, in the interest of time, it's ten fifty-three, and I know that we have to get to A.
All right, so make a motion to table I.
I'm gonna move up, uh, new business A.
Or just make a motion to table I, we're never gonna get there, so.
Okay, I will make a motion to table I.
Second.
Okay.
Alls in favor, please say aye.
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 Sorry, Chris, uh, okay, can I get a motion for A?
Make motion to, uh, approve, but I do have a question.
You are allowed to make a motion to approve and then not vote to approve it, so that's fine.
Second.
Like, it's not, like, just.
Right, 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 okay.
Um, so we have a motion to approve the Stony Lane rooftop units discussion, questions?
I have a question.
Great.
Uh, so, the amount in the CIP to replace all of them is less money than it is in here to replace four of them?
Actually, the amount in the CIP is for, um, ventilation fans, not rooftop units, rooftop units provide heat and air conditioning, they're big, massive things, as big as a car, that sit on top of the school.
It's RTU, right?
An RTU, right, an RTU is not an exhaust fan.
But the amount in the CIP for the RTU?
There is no amount in the CIP for an RTU.
It is, that's what I saw.
Uh, I, I, I didn't see what you saw, then.
Okay.
Can you follow up, Jen, with a line in the CIP for Chris to review, 'cause obviously we've had some transition in staffing in, in the process, and so that is not something I don't, I, it is a valid inquiry, but it is actually, the, is the question, why is the Stony Lane rooftop unit so expensive?
The question is, why is four of them more expensive than all of them? That was my question, and seeing that I know nothing about rooftop units at all, um, I could very well be wrong, I just thought it was weird that.
Regardless of that inquiry, which I agree is important, um, the current decision that we need to make is that we have a failing.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said I will approve it regardless, I just.
Yeah, yeah, so why don't we, in the interest of time, that sounds like a nice offline inquiry, um, valid, but, but offline, but so, the question here is, do we, any questions about the proposal to purchase this unit?
Yeah, no, it's M five, HVAC M five, RTU recommissioning.
Okay, recommissioning is, uh, a reassessing of the condition of the current RTUs.
And it also said, remove and replace all roof exhaust fans.
Correct, an exhaust fan is not an RTU.
Okay, so.
So not exhausts.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, that's, so, those RTUs are just reconditioning them, assessing their capabilities, continuing to provide the service that they're supposed to provide.
Okay, will we not need to do that now that we're fixing them, and replacing them?
There are a number of RTU, I believe there are eleven total RTUs on top of that school.
Just for Stony.
Will that cost, will that never go away, now that we are buying a new rooftop?
Yes, that number, seventy-nine thousand should decrease.
Okay.
Could be absorbed into this. Yeah, do we have, and I'm looking at the documentation, where, what, where is this funding coming from, just for the publics?
Uh, there's two options, one's come straight out of the CIP, the verbiage within the bond allows us to spend that money on HVAC, just HVAC at Stony Lane, two-point-two million dollars total. Uh, so we would have to reprioritize some of those funds if we were to spend them on new RTUs. The second option is, we could apply to RIDE for an emergency HVAC fund allocation. Uh, we would, uh, spend the money ourselves and then be reimbursed by RIDE up to thirty-five percent of the total expenditure.
So do we have to decide which we're gonna do?
We don't have to decide now, we are on the right side of winter for this to happen. We don't have to decide now. We are on the right side of winter for this to happen. And we're going to continue to get warmer and warmer. So the heat that those R T Us provide will no longer be mandatory. Keep in mind, the R T Us also do air conditioning. And the air conditioner's portion is fine. So we have until September, October to really, uh, put this one to bed, to make a concise decision.
All right, so this, so Ken, what, what do you, what do you need from us? Like, not, not in a bad.
No, 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 to make, to make was to update you. I had said to Chris earlier today, so we probably don't want approval just because we want to make sure these numbers are matching up. And do we need to get any additional, um, do we want additional, um, quotes on this? Because there were questions regarding the C I P, what's the exact, the C I P and the costs. And Chris, you know, told me earlier that, you know, we can wait because spring's coming.
Uh huh.
Um, and that way too, you know, we can look at what those needs are so we can put something in place for summer, fall.
We would get the same reimbursement rate if we did it via the bond or if we did it via the emergency H V A C?
That's correct.
And we would, so why wouldn't we? If we do the emergency H V A C, how do we pay it back? Like, what?
Um, that's, we'd have to find the money. That's.
So do it through the bond? What, like?
No, doing it through the bond means that we won't be able to do something on that R T, or the Stony Lane H V A C improvement plan. We're going to have to give up some of that money.
Another question that came up in this is why it was not that important.
We would, that would go right back at you all.
Well, that's my question to.
Yeah, it's a valid concern. Okay, so right now, you don't need anything from us. So we can see this at a future meeting and you could give us.
This was just to give you.
We would just want the, um, in the, in figuring out the funding source, what would be helpful for me is to understand if we did the bond, what wouldn't get done, and if we did do the emergency H V A C, understanding the fiscal commitment that we would be making for the district and the town. So that's what I would like.
And we only have, I, uh, I asked our H V A C provider to provide immediate quote, and that's the quote you'll see in your package. But that's only one quote.
And if we did the bond, would we have to first get town approval?
Why, start.
We would have to. That would have to be, you know, uh, stage two would have to be approved and we'd have to get it in writing that yes, you can go ahead and start spending money.
And then, and then one more quick question. Um, it, how long does it take, like, to order these parts and to get the work done? Just, I mean, I remember, you know, back in the day, COVID and stuff, it was forever and some of that stuff is still trickled over.
The, uh, the four units that have been taken offline and will never be used again for heat, um, the vendor said that he could have them here in three weeks.
Okay.
But that is not a guarantee, but that's a pretty good sign.
Okay.
That the style of units that we need on top of that building are probably relatively available.
Okay. Any other questions regarding this? It is 11, and so we only have an extension to 11, so I will.
Suck it up for 15 more minutes. I bet you we can get through it.
Somebody would have to make a motion to do so.
I will make the motion to extend it to 11:15.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to discuss B.
Second.
Uh, okay, so we have a motion. Did you say to approve?
No, discuss.
Are you sure you didn't say?
I, okay, I will make a motion to approve.
Great. Can I do a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Can somebody explain this to me?
Well, so I, I have a comment. This would make the bus to 13 years, which is.
Okay, why don't we start?
Our policy.
Come on up, Michelle.
Other agreement?
No, we do have a follow-up question.
So, hi. So we had two contractors earlier in the year that both asked for that one-year extension because their time expired. So we gave them the one-year extension. However, Mr. Gardner was going to do the same thing and ask for a one-year extension on that.
But then he decided to renew the entire contract.
Michelle, can you back up and explain, like, the whole thing? Like, I've never seen anything like this. Why are they giving the bus to us?
Oh, that's what we do, Jen.
You better get a motion to go beyond 15.
Oh, wait. Hold on. I had something I maybe didn't say.
When, what I've learned is.
They own all the buses.
Is that they signed the buses over to us.
No.
That's how we can ensure them.
But then we get them back.
These are all true statements.
Okay.
We had similar thoughts. Okay, it's unique. That's what I'm going to say. It is unique.
Okay, that makes a little sense.
The one in front of us is from, we have, so it's bus five. We have a, it looks like this was signed in 2016, the last document?
Yep, that was the, um, his contract.
Yes.
So now he is at the end of his contract after his extension, his two-year extension. So now he wants to, instead of enter into one more year and ask for a one more year extension, what he opted to do is to renew the entire contract.
So he will take that bus once he receive, you know, bus five, will take that off the road.
Oh, okay, so he's going to, he's buying a new bus.
Yes.
Where does it say that?
He submitted the second one where he said he wanted to buy, where he wanted to do a new contract. I mean, it doesn't say what bus yet he's buying or what year or at what price. It just says he wants the option to renew his entire contract. This is the first step into, to enter before he. So then, once he purchases the bus, he has to bring it back to the school committee for approval for, for the length of the contract. So if he buys the bus and it's two years old, then he'll get that initial 10-year contract on that because he'll already be two years behind.
Uh huh. So wouldn't it be a new contract, not a renewal? Andrew.
Well.
I also don't.
Do we each do this today?
This is why I didn't say approve, F Y I.
But it's just like, if we did get, it's, you know what I mean?
I mean, I would be, I would be nervous based on the 13-year thing. This is just my take.
Yeah, that's why I, I'm sorry, Michelle. I was just like.
He may buy a new bus, but we don't know what the new bus is. I mean, I, my assumption would be they'd come and say, I've, I've, I've got a purchase and sale for a new bus here. I understand they don't want to enter into it till we approve it. But they should have like a purchase and sale ready to go. Well, this is what I'm doing, subject to approval from you folks.
Yeah, there's none of that in here. So what do we normally, what do we normally do when we put a bus on?
Hold on, let, let Michelle.
Until you approve him for a contract, he's not going to purchase the bus. So he would need to be approved for a new contract. He's not asking for the extension any longer. He was asking for the extension based on the fact that two other contractors asked for a one-year extension.
Where is the, his extension? I'm only seeing the 23 document.
At the bottom. Also, no, it says like till June 30th to 2023 with the two-year option to renew.
Correct.
There is no extension.
So he's at the end of it. But in the beginning of this school year, we had two contractors who were up at the 2025. And based on where they were going with the contract, they both asked for a one-year extension, which they got that. So they're both in 13 years at this point, the other two.
I'm still.
So Mr. Gardner was going to ask for the same thing, except he decided to rescind that and move forward and ask for an entire new contract.
Who were the other two buses that got to 13?
Um, bus, uh, yes. One was for Salisbury Transportation and the other was for Diana Preble, bus seven. And I think it was bus 22, but I can't remember if it was 22 or 11.
New contract in here?
And I, and I think what we found from the negotiations is there is no contract. The new contract would be a new bill of sale for the new bus.
Well, you can't do that until, oh my gosh.
Until you approve him.
Right, until you approve him.
That's, because we asked for that. And I think the only thing we've been able to find so far are these bills of sale.
So I think what I think, what's that? Can we create something? All right, we have to say this agenda topic. Sorry. The agenda topic in front of us is a bus contract renewal.
Uh, I.
Andrew, can you give your professional recognition and how the committee can proceed to get out of this weirdness?
Staying in the weirdness that we're already in, but moving it forward, I think you could probably do something like approve the, the five-year contract subject to the school committee's approval of, of a new bus or a new vehicle, or newer vehicle. I mean, I.
Wouldn't we need like something written though that says that? You know what I mean? Like something from, from the, him saying, I'm.
Going to buy a new bus.
Yes, like, I think that could be all and then we.
That's why I was suggesting like a P and S or even a draft that said, hey, I went to the bus dealership and here, here's the offer that they've given me and this is what I plan to do. Can I get a new five-year contract and I'll execute that? But we don't have that. That's, I guess that was my confusion, like.
But why is it, why is it in front of me as an agenda item for bus five contract renewal? And people are telling me there's no contract. Like what, that's not even.
That, yeah, that's verbiage that's been used in the district.
Table, right?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, we'll circle back, Michelle.
That's okay.
Um.
We did see, uh, I'm going to make a motion to table D until Leslie's here next week. I don't want to talk about budget stuff and what we're committing to unless you've not here.
I'll second.
Okay.
The presentation?
That, no, the budget.
The budget is on the presentation.
Yeah, it can seem time for that. Okay.
I think it's a D.
No.
Yeah.
It is D. The, no, the advisory, not the draft of the presentation.
Committee relaxation.
Not E.
So we're going to, we're going to wait.
Gamer?
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea.
Aye.
Okay, that's bigger. And then E is not actually for, Ken, we've never, even though it's 11, whatever. Um, the request was not to Dr. Duvall to present the draft budget presentation that was going to the town.
I thought it was going to start with a presentation.
Shut up. Um, you were never, you were never doing that.
It's 25 slides.
Um, we had it put on, um, so that the committee could review it. Um, like I, last year, I didn't like seeing it for the first time at the town council meeting. That felt weird to me. And so I asked Dr. Duvall to attach what they were planning on presenting at the town council meeting, which is, um. Yeah. And so, um, the committee, if the committee could please look at that and see if there's any additional information that they would like Dr. Duvall to include in that presentation to the town based on all of our discussions, please send, send feedback to Dr. Duvall. For it? Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Please copy jewels on it.
Yeah, and not each other. Um, because we won't have a meeting before we go, correct? Let's hope we had to put it on this one, if I remember correctly.
When do you go?
It's.
Is it April?
April.
April.
It's not first, last one.
21st.
Oh.
Town Council will eliminate budget, April 21st.
And our.
Our meeting's April 8th.
Yep, so great. So you can review it and then you can ask, we can ask questions at that meeting. Okay, let's move on.
So we want this on the April 8th meeting?
Yes, please. You can also say, Ken, pre-questions as well, but we will see it one more time before it goes to the town. Um, next item F, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second. Okay. Uh, Jen, do you want to?
Yes, so there have been several resolutions passed by various, um, school committees. Uh, there's in regards to statewide transportation. Um, there's actually a statewide commission on transportation. They talked about it at the, um, yes, yes.
Right after.
Yes. Um, and so there have been several towns that have passed, um, resolutions basically asking the state to, um, assist with, um, funding for out-of-district transportation and ask for federal funding for McKinnon students. And, um, so this is just basically copying the resolutions that the other districts have done, saying that we also agree that that's important for the state to do. And it would reduce, uh, the burden if passed for our out-of-district transportation and, uh, McKinnon students. So I just requested that this be put on the agenda for consideration if we wanted to, um, do it. Also, I didn't have, since Leslie is, um, out, I didn't have the actual, um, figures that.
We would put in where the yellow is.
But so this is just to get, you know, approval in theory and then, um, get the actual numbers from her when she comes back.
Okay, questions regarding this? People think it's a good idea, bad idea. Like, I don't want to have Leslie full numbers if we're not going to.
Can I talk? Can I say something? Yes, it's a good idea. Michelle.
She left. She left.
And I had a.
She was like, you tabled my thing out of here. That was kicked out. All right, so Dr. Duvall supports the resolution?
Michelle and I had a conversation with Ryan last week regarding this, exact issue.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to, is it adopt this resolution? Was the?
I think so.
Yes, pending the figures that would be entered, um, by Leslie. But I don't feel like I need to see him again. Like, she'll give it, like, I'll see it, but not for the, I'll prove it blind, knowing that Leslie will put in the correct figures.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just curious, is it more impactful if we all signed it? Or does that not matter?
Don't think that's how it vibes.
No.
Okay, just curious.
Approved by the body.
Comes from the school committee.
Yeah, it's a good question, um, but, but typically it's.
Like, they'll know it was approved because it's.
Yeah, it says, um, we could also.
They're accustomed to receiving these.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, like by signing it on behalf, it's, it's approved by, by the body.
You can even write five oh vote.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, yeah.
A lot of times, it'll say.
Yeah, depending, yeah. So if we do have a vote, we can, we can indicate that so they know whatever percentage approval. Any further questions on this one?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, um, Ken, when Leslie gets back, could you help her fill those numbers in? And then we, I will sign it and off it will go. Um, the next item is, um, F, right?
No, Jen, it's out of that.
It's gone, all right.
Okay, tell me the motion to discuss G.
Second.
Jen, do you want to?
Yep, so these are, Senator Valverde has put through, um, two bills in the Senate. I'll talk about S, uh, 705 three first, uh, which is, uh, this would allow the dismissal, right now, the state law requires that if you are going to dismiss a 10-year teacher, it must be done prior to March 1st. If it's not done prior to March 1st, the teacher, um, is not allowed to be terminated until March 1st of the prior year. So if you terminate them, right, did I say that right?
The.
The next year.
The next year, not prior to the future year.
The future year. So this bill would allow a carve-out for if the teacher is terminated due to gross misconduct with a student. Um, so that would mean, um, you know, there is no timeline constraint. And so, um, she has introduced this legislation and this is just basically saying that we support that. And, um, so we're putting this forward, um, and we're hoping, uh, that we can get, um, support for this.
Um, Jen, prior to, do we have the motion yet? Sorry.
No, so this is just discussion.
Yeah, but we have a motion to discuss, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry, sometimes you would need policy, you do it first and then we might get. Um, we did have a citizen come, um, two citizens come in before you were here and they had made a suggestion that we include with, something about with any infraction?
That was with, um, 0633.
Was it?
Yes, it was.
Okay, just kidding. Not this one, but the next one.
But I do have a question. I, um, is there a de, a definition of gross misconduct versus just like infractions? Or, or stuff on the record? Do you know what I mean? Because.
So I believe in my understanding of, in the creation and the, the development of this, that that would be something that the body would work through up at the state level. Because I don't think there's any, like, state definition of it. And so if this bill evolves, they would end up working through to define gross misconduct. My interpretation of it is, because I Googled it to see, try to find when, where it was.
It's 11:15. I'm going to make a motion to extend to 11:25, just to get some.
Second. I know, I'm sorry. But correspondence alone is going to take five minutes. 11:25.
Um, in my mind, gross misconduct is serious inappropriate behavior that violates, like, the standards and, like, basically like serious and unacceptable.
Okay, but, but it's something that they could potentially amend, like, because I think it sounds super harsh. And I would, I like this idea of this bill and I, but I just feel like, you know, there might be people who are a little bit below that gross misconduct.
For a long time, there's Superior Court decisions that say what an archaic law this March 1st to spend without pay and then terminate the following year. So this has been on the books for a while. My assumption is that they'd have to clean up gross misconduct because you're right, there's no.
Yeah.
What if that.
Yeah, okay. But I think, I think from my understanding, Senator Valverde knows that and like, that would be part of the conversation if we move forward. Okay.
Yeah, so this mimics the bill itself that's been put through. So like, if the bill changed, well, obviously, but the resolution would be put through. But this, like, I don't think we could change our resolution because it's to support the bill as it.
Right, but you could like write in and ask.
Yeah, we could do another resolution.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So right now, um, what's, what's in front of us is just basically the same thing that with the other one is if the committee is willing to support this resolution to go up to the committee that is looking at, um, this bill.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait, did you want to add this thing?
Or adopt.
I think it's the other one. I think it's the next one.
Oh, it's the next one?
So this is this one, yeah, so, where I was making the, the motion to adopt the resolution, the first resolution.
First one. Okay.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I think I just seconded.
Yeah, seconded too.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then the last one?
Uh, so this is a similar resolution. Senator Valverde has put through another bill, which would currently, uh, state law provides that, um, a list of teachers that have been terminated, uh, for good and just cause is maintained, uh, by Department of Education. That list is not public, but it is available to, uh, any hiring authority. Uh, the bill that she has put through would, uh, provide that a similar list is kept for any, uh, non-certified, um, employee. So, uh, like, just, you know, any other, basically, employee of a school district who is not certified. Um, so this resolution is in support of that. That would allow for, um, basically, anybody who is a, an administrator or a teacher, um, to have a list, uh, maintained if they are fired for, um, good cause as well. What was the comment the citizen made?
Um, it was more along the same lines that not just, um...
Terminated, but if they resigned.
Teacher, they said, she said, teacher with any infractions. She did mention that she sent feedback to, um, the senator.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to, usually, you would have caught that, because, but so I just wanted to bring it up, because you weren't here during that portion. I don't think we need to change anything with the resolution. Um, I just wanted to bring it up, because you were not here for that, that one spot.
And I, I just wanted, I know we can't change anything, but I did just wanna point out that in paragraph five, the last sentence, doesn't mimic what, it was in paragraph one about the list, be, the last sentence of paragraph one. The list of terminated teachers shall be accessible only to the hiring authority of any, there they list private parochial charter or public school, whereas in the last paragraph, um, or the fifth paragraph, I should say.
This is in the proposed law, not our resolution, right?
It's in our resolution, yeah.
But is it?
Which I pulled from the law.
Right, from the law, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanna point out that, you know, if we do all write in, or people to wanna write in, you know, it says, this list in number, paragraph five-ish, where it says her name, um, this list would not be a public document, but would be available to hiring authorities of schools and school districts. I feel like that should be more specific, because I think the problem right now is that, um, or at least it was, that parochial and private schools weren't getting the same, having access to the same information.
Yes, yep, they get, that's a big change that, yep.
Right, so I just wanna, I just think the language should be a little bit more specific in that paragraph, where it's, uh, you know, 'cause like in paragraph one, where it says private, parochial, charter, or public, encompassing all the schools.
Yeah, I would suggest, uh, letting, uh, the senator know and provide that feedback also.
Can we, could the body, could we send the resolution along and also say, would they know, like, a suggestion of?
Yeah.
It would be outside of the resolution.
Yeah, outside of the resolution, but with that, we could send that along.
Okay.
I think that's, I don't think that's intentional. My guess is intentional, but it's a good clarification.
No, no, but I, I just, that way we have, they're covered, like, everything is covered.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause that was a specific gap, is that, yes, yeah.
Yeah, it was a loophole, so...
Yeah, and I don't think it's an intentional gap here. I think it's just verbiage, but we get, so we can, if, I would recommend if we approve the resolution, we could send that along, like, in the body of the email that the resolution goes with, the committee also had a note regarding X, and then we can outline that, that note.
Okay, and that, so that's something you'd cover, right? Like, when you write up it, or...
I, I don't send it, um, the clerks usually send it, so I'll...
Okay, but, but we don't have to do it anymore, no, you don't want to...
Yeah, it's for the cover letter that says, you know...
Yeah, we'll just do...
Committee also draws your attention to...
Yeah, yeah. In addition to the resolution, we'd like to draw the, the body's attention to the last sentence of, of whatnot, just to make sure that it includes the list that was on the first paragraph.
So the document that drafted and provided to the clerk before it's sent, so I don't think we should just rely on the clerk.
Yeah, I'll do it. Yeah, no, I'll do it, yeah.
Well, you wanna do it?
Yeah, no, you can do it. Oh my gosh, yeah, no, you do it. No, we'll just, like, it's, it's one, we'll provide that one sentence, and then it can just go along with, uh, the resolution when we send it, if approved. Um, any other questions regarding the resolution, or?
Nope.
Something else? Okay. Um...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all those in, alright, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then that brings us to correspondence.
Uh, March fourth, Michael Portal redistricting meetings, uh, March fourth, William Gohegan, uh, no subject. It was about redistricting, uh, March fifth, Sean Taylor's school committee meeting, twenty eighth, March fifth. Ed Brenahan, from Ed Brenahan, March fifth, Lenaya Anderson, redistricting, March fifth, Felicia McKay, Thelma Irene Drive, March fifth, Meg, uh, Nikki Hogan, redistricting proposal, March fifth, Barb Amontano, Hamilton Fishing Cove, redistricting, communication causing turmoil in our neighborhoods and school communities. March fifth, Paige McMahon, redistricting comment, March fifth, Claire Mack, Sydoc, Thelma Irene, Barle, neighborhood redistricting. March fifth, Paulina Sheehy, redistricting the residence of five sixty-nine Boston Road. March fifth, Melissa Porte, redistricting, March fifth, Jennifer Vincent McCuey, Sydoc, Hamilton Neighborhood, redistricting. March sixth, Lucy Schreiner, redistricting Hamilton, is in the prospect and Anna Satak neighborhoods. March sixth, Justine Adnada, High Press Drive, March sixth, Barb Amontano, Hamilton Elementary, support for a modular building to avoid redistricting. March sixth, Matt Miller, opposition to Hamilton School redistricting, March sixth, Chief John Urban, safe schools collaboration policy review. March sixth, Bria Anderson, JCAA districting, redistricting concerns, March seventh, Cara Marchant, twenty twenty-six, budget. March seventh, Cal Marley, JCAA policy feedback, March seventh, Lori, Laura Roy, redistricting, March seventh, Melissa Chorah, comment to safe schools policy, March seventh, Matt McCoy, RSPP request in North Kingstown, date at the Rhode Island State House. March seventh, Rebecca L'Blanc, policy review, March seventh, Sean Taylor, school community meeting, March fourth, twenty-five. Agenda documents altered after meeting, March eighth, Barb Amontano, move all kindergarten to Vanessa Elementary School. March eighth, Megan Meyer, redistricting concerns, Littleton Avenue, Hamilton Neighborhood, March ninth, Charlotte Bigg, redistricting, this neighborhood. March ninth, Mary Godfrey, regarding redistricting, NK school zones, March ninth, Sean Taylor, topic request for March twelfth, special meeting. March ninth, Brianna Taylor, Slocom-Sonderston Elementary School redistricting, March ninth, Alexandria Garafano, concerns regarding drug education in kindergarten. March ninth, Bill Seymour, redistricting for Hamilton Elementary, March tenth, William Leidl, Bissell Cove Neighborhood, March tenth, Brad Kettley, redistricting issues, suggestion for new middle school to have fifth grade and build on high school grounds. March tenth, Christine Portrionato, oppose the updates to redistricting policy, March tenth, Justine Hederson, redistricting plan opposition. March tenth, Claire Arthur, opposition to propose school boundary redistricting, March tenth, Mary Smith, grade four, Hamilton, redistricting concerns, Daniel Drive, March tenth, Mary Scriv, Mary Smith, grade two, Hamilton, redistricting concerns, concern, Daniel Drive. March eleventh, Ruby Adowen, redistricting, Daniel Drive Neighborhood, March eleventh, Sarah Fanning, school redistricting, Slocom-Sonderstown, Andrews area. March eleventh, Julia Wood, redistricting, March eleventh, Matt Miller, opposition to Hamilton School redistricting. March twelve, Katie Kellam, fishing code redistricting, March twelve, Don Maliko, building and renovation plans. March twelve, Bob Vander Slice, avoiding redistricting by asking parents to voluntarily move children to less crowded schools. March thirteenth, Joshua Zarin, gap student presentation, March thirteenth, Sean Taylor, comments for consideration of policy subcommittee and school committee. March thirteenth, Cara Marchant, safe schools, allow North Kingstown police to make positive interactions with students at NK schools. March fourteenth, from a student regarding internet censorship, March fourteenth, Ruran Sardeli, redistricting data, March fourteenth, Tara Urban, request for further discussion on safe school and redistricting policies, March fourteenth, Ruran Sardeli, request for further discussion on safe school and redistricting policies, March fourteenth, Chief John Urban, local police are not nice, March fourteenth, Michael Pallana ignored emails, March fourteenth, Michael Porto, policy of establishing school boundary lines, March fifteenth, Jennifer Vincent McCuey, just safe schools, propose changes to support local police and student safety, March sixteenth, Megan Meyer, concerned about redistricting inequities in policy, March sixteenth, Dan Swain, no to redistricting, March sixteenth, Jennifer Vincent McCuey, NK school redistricting data request, March seventeenth, Hannah Brown, safe school policy report, March seventeenth, a parent regarding a concern about a student,